I called to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six-thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
If we can all stand for the invocation, and then after the invocation, we'll turn and pledge allegiance to the flag. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Reverend Naco Kellum of the First United Methodist Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. Lord of lords, King of kings, gracious God, you are the Lord of this city, and we thank you for your presence with us tonight. We thank you for these men and women who are willing to serve and willing to lead. We lift them up to you. We ask that you will give them your guidance and your wisdom as they meet tonight. We dedicate them to you. We dedicate this time. We dedicate this city to you. Lord, glorify yourself. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started, there's a couple of announcements I'd like to make. First, this evening, our city attorney is Ms. Mariana Galastegui. She's with the law firm of Unisalsman. She'll be filling in for us tonight as the city attorney. Also, I'd like to announce that we're deferring items seventeen and eighteen to the regular session of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item seventeen is ordered as two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight Keystone Village Residential Plan Development. That's the second reading. And item eighteen is the Land Development Code, Smart Code, and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments. There are several provisions for this, and those will be second readings as well. And the reason why we're delaying these is because there was a mess-up with the advertising by the newspaper before Hurricane Ian, and we just had to delay them until we re-advertised, and this is as soon as we'll be able to hear them. Well, this evening, we had a presentation scheduled for the Rotary, Tarpon Springs Rotary Club, but unfortunately, we're not going to do that tonight. We substituted that for something else, and I'd like for the commission to come forward in front of the dais. I'll be joining them with a proclamation, so if you can all stand and move towards the front of the dais, city manager or city clerk, and Chief Young, if you could come forward as well. Ron and Ms. Patricia Hadad to come forward, please.
This evening, I have the great honor of bestowing an outstanding citizenship award in grateful appreciation of your continuing service and support to the City of Tarpon Springs, presented to Ron and Patricia Hadad.
I would like to read the certificate's narrative. The Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, express appreciation to Ron and Patricia Hadad for being an integral part of the community, earning the respect of the community through years of service, and for a reputation of always putting the good of the community first. Your service to the community is known across Tarpon Springs, Pinellas County, and beyond, and your good works in the community guided by your faith serve as an example of selfless service to others to follow. Ron has marked many years of outstanding leadership and lifelong commitment to the City of Tarpon Springs, serving as chairman of the Greater Tarpon Springs Community Council, president of the Shepherd Center, and Tarpon Springs Rotary Club, chairman of North Pinellas Habitat for Humanity, and member of the Salvation Army Advisory Board, a community advocate who works hard to support and improve the quality of life in our city. Patricia is always there and willing to do whatever has to be done to keep things going. Her positive impact in our community, fostering the spirit of goodwill, is an exemplary model of citizenship. We value what you have done and appreciate all your hard work and dedication. We call upon the good people of Tarpon Springs to join us in paying tribute to Ron and Patricia Hadad and commend them for making a real difference in helping to improve the quality of life in our community. In witness whereof, this certificate is presented this fiftieth day of November, two thousand twenty-two, and it's signed by Mayor Costavati Kyotis, Vice Mayor Craig Lunt, Commissioner Jacob Carr, Commissioner Mike Eisner, and Commissioner Panayotti Kulyas. Congratulations, Ron and Patricia.
Thank you so much.
When I have the duty of mayor, I have to say something, and usually, it's a lot more than what I want to say here. All I'm going to say is that I often refer to our city clerk's office as the Switzerland of city hall. It's a safe place. It's neutral territory. If there is an ambassador to Switzerland, it's Ron Hadad. I've known Ron for a couple of years, and I've never heard him say anything controversial. I've never heard him say anything bad. I've heard, never had him say anything other than "good for you," "it's what the city needs," and he's always extremely positive. And because of that, he'll be in my heart and mind as the ambassador to Switzerland of Tarpon Springs, so thank you again. I've invited the city manager, city clerk, and I know Ron works closely with our chief of police, Chief Young, on our homeless outreach program. But I'd also like to invite, and you'll have a chance to say something as well, but I'd like to invite the commission up first. If any of you commissioners would like to say anything, please come forward. Excuse me. I should ask Ron and Patricia if they'd like to say something first, so.
I just, I am overwhelmed, totally surprised by this, and I'm about ready to cry, so I'm not going to say too much more. But I just want to thank our commissioners, our police and fire department, for the dedicated love and caring and concern. This is an incredible community. Thanks to all of them, and thanks to all of you. It's a privilege to be involved in helping and serving. Thank you. God bless.
And I'll say it's a privilege to be the wife of Ron Hadad, and thank you for being our mayor.
Thank you, Patricia, and I learned from Dolly a long, long time ago, I never leave the better half out of anything. So you're a partner. You've been married for over fifty years. Obviously, you're doing a lot of things right, and I commend you for that fact alone. So if you have a question as far as how all this came about, I would suggest maybe you speak to your good friend, Mr. Brock. He might have something to say there. So now, I would like to invite the commission to come forward and say something if you'd like.
Sure. Patricia, Ron, I really haven't known you for all that long, but I've always been incredibly impressed with your service to the community. So congratulations, very well deserved, both of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ron, I think I know you quite well. In Rotary, we have the service above self, and when you look it up in the dictionary, it says Ron and Patricia Hadad right there. I think you need a new set of roller skates, and you need new oil to keep them rolling around the town. I've never seen somebody work harder than you. I admire you, and you and I are going to have some tears later because you really touch my heart in everything you do in town. So I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say it's an honor to stand up here with you. As a volunteer, basically, that serves the residents, I know you don't get paid to do anything either for this aspect, so it speaks a lot about your character and integrity in what you do. So thank you for everything that you do for the City of Tarpon Springs and the residents.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Hadad, I just want to say thank you both for all the volunteer work you do for all the many organizations in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say you two, you know I'm your biggest fan, and you's as well deserved, and I'm glad to see this given to you.
Well, Ron, over almost thirty years that we've been working together on projects throughout the city, and Patricia, both of you are, I think the mayor, every word he said is dead-on. Can't meet two kinder people that give back to the community unselfishly. And when I reach out to you, Ron, you're always there to lend a hand, a voice, and some guidance, and I appreciate you and love you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite our commissioners to return to their seats. I'll stand up here with Ron and Patricia to protect them. And if any of the public would like to come up to the podium and say something, you're more than welcome to.
... I'm on Bay Shore Drive. I've known Ron since he came into Rotary. He never says no, and I think Ron Hadad has built more homes for humanity than President Carter has, not only in our community, but Pinellas community-wide. And if any of you want to help him ring the bell at Christmas time, get in touch with him, because he can always use volunteers to ring the bell at the different stores. He never lets down, and if there's a no, he says, "Don't worry, I will find someone," and he does. And Ms. Patricia, with her knowledge of being a librarian, she has really offered a lot to our community, and we thank you very much, and we thank you for choosing Tarpon Springs.
Is there anyone else? Mrs. Wykel, thank you.
Tarpon Springs Rotary, Matthew twenty-five thirty-one. Well done, good and faithful servant, Ron. We are blessed to work with you. Business owners sometimes close the door when they see you coming because they know you're going to ask for something, but we love that. They really don't. He says they do, but they really don't. Anyway, we're, as a club, we are really honored to serve with you, and you epitomize service above self to everyone out there in the city. And I just want to thank the commissioners and the mayor and Rotaryian Cliff Brock for making this happen, because it's, well, it's long overdue. Good and faithful servant. Thank you.
Mr. Brock.
Cliff Brock, Austin Drive, just outside the city limits. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and the commissioners. You folks have recognized two of the finest people I've ever known in my life.
Thank you. I also want to recognize the Tarpon Springs Rotary. If you'd like to stand, you were going to have a presentation tonight, but obviously, that wasn't going to happen, so anyway. Well, congratulations, Ron and Patricia, and thank you, thank you very much for everything that you do. Thank you, everybody. Our other special presentation, certificate of appreciation to Ms. Lanford, will be done at the next meeting. Item C, we have a Pinellas County update on Beckett Bridge and Riverside Drive drainage improvement projects. City management course, yeah, Bob Robertson has come up and introduced our guest to give us an update on the Beckett Bridge. Thank you for putting it together so fast from when the commission asked for it, for putting it together. Bob, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, who's dropping all my stuff. Excuse me. So at the, as Mark said, at the October twenty-fifth board meeting, the board directed the city manager and staff to request an update from Pinellas County on the Beckett Bridge project. County representatives are here tonight to do just that. Anne Venables and Erin Lawson are here tonight from the county. Both have spoken before, are boards before. Anne is a project manager in the Capital Improvements Division in the county and is the project manager for this, for the Beckett Bridge project. She's accompanied by her boss, Erin Lawson, from Pinellas County Public Works, who's the manager of the Transportation Engineering Section of the Capital Improvements Division. And Anne will provide the update tonight on the status of the bridge, so I'm going to turn it over to Anne. Come on up, and I'm going to get your presentation queued up here.
It's a pleasure to have this opportunity to speak with the commission, and I'm hoping that this short presentation, I requested a short one, and I have known to talk fast, so hopefully, I won't talk too fast. But I hope this presentation answers most of the questions that you have about the current status of the Beckett Bridge replacement project and also the Riverside Drainage improvements. So let's start with just very briefly reviewing the two projects. The replacement project, the construction for the replacement project, the limits extend from Chesapeake Drive just west of the bridge to Pompous Avenue east of the bridge. And for the Riverside Drainage improvements, this project picks up where the Beckett Bridge project ends, and it goes basically west to just past the curve on Riverside, where you can see on the map. So the purpose of the Riverside Drainage Improvement Project is to reduce some of the roadway flooding. Those that you live out there know that can be a big problem by collecting some of the roadway runoff into additional stormwater drains. And the construction of these improvements will be concurrent with the replacement of the bridge. They will be let in the same construction contract. So just to review, you know, our existing bridge only provides about six feet of vertical clearance. That's the maximum at the fenders, and it also provides twenty-five feet of horizontal clearance for boats. It's considered structurally deficient, and it's also considered functionally obsolete, and that's because of the bridge geometry, which does not meet the current standards. It's very narrow, and there are no shoulders on the bridge. So our proposed bridge, well, first, I just wanted to mention that we did a project development environmental study, which enabled the county to be eligible for federal funding, and that study concluded in two thousand seventeen. And I was here talking to you about that project in the past for some of you. And so there was a preferred alternative that was selected, that was approved by the county BCC, the DOT, and the Federal Highway, and that alternative is to replace this movable bridge with a very similar one on the same alignment. The difference will, it'll be slightly higher in the closed position, seven point eight feet compared to six. It'll still have the same horizontal clearance. The biggest difference is it's going to be about twenty point five feet wider than the existing bridge. So as you can see here, the existing bridge typical is very narrow. We've only got two and a half foot sidewalks, no shoulders, so emergency vehicles cannot get past when there's an accident on the bridge, and the overall width is only twenty-eight feet. Whoops, we are missing a slide. Sorry about that. Anyway, the proposed bridge typical section, which isn't up there, has same thing, ten-foot travel lanes, but, well, I have a, sorry about that. But it has basically six-foot sidewalks on both sides, and there are four-foot shoulders also. So that's where the other width is, and I apologize that that slide isn't up there. And this is the roadway east of the bridge. That's proposed. We're going to have ten-foot travel lanes with six-foot sidewalks on both sides and four-foot shoulders. West of the bridge will be very similar, but we're only going to have six-foot sidewalks on one side because of the reduced roadway in that area. As you're aware from presentations from Bob Robertson, this project will require the relocation of the city's mayor, main sewer and water lines. Right now, they cross the bayou right under the bridge. That won't be possible in the future because of a number of engineering reasons, so they're going to be relocated north of the yacht club and then cross the bayou and then, you know, tie back into Riverside Drive. The design and construction of that is being done by the city. We also are going to require a number of utility adjustments on the west side of the bridge. These design is being done by the city. However, there will be a JPA with the county, and the construction of this project will be included in the county's contract. Currently, the county is in the process of acquiring the construction easements that we need to construct the bridge. There are actually very small amounts of property on a number of parcels. The temporary easements only add up to point one acres for all of them, and the reasons that we need these are, for one, removal of trees. Some of those trees are within the limits of construction, and others have been determined by our county arborists that they would be in danger of falling over possibly on the property owner's property because of potential for damage to the root systems in the construction zone. The other thing is that we need those for is for access to construction of sidewalks, driveways, and curb and gutter, just to get equipment back there and to get people back there. We also have a few permanent easements. That's about a quarter of acre, and actually, we have a large one for the outfall for the new drainage system, which is just on that curve that you saw on Riverside Drive. In terms of funding, the bridge replacement is currently funded by Penny for Pinellas. However, as I said, we're eligible for federal funding, so we did apply for the Federal Highway Bridge Improvement Grant Program, and we should hope to hear whether we will receive that money, hopefully at the end of November. And we did include the cost of all the utility relocation that the city would incur in that grant application, so we're very much hoping that we get that money for the city and the county, of course. The Riverside Drainage Improvement is funded by Penny for Pinellas. So just to summarize, where are the project statuses for both of the projects? Our final construction plans are due and will be submitted at the end of December of this year. As I said, we're acquiring the construction easements now. That's what's really taking up the time and, you know, is causing some delay. And we anticipate that the earliest that we're going to be able to advertise for construction would be this early next year, spring of two thousand twenty-three. If that happens, then we would anticipate that construction would start late in two thousand twenty-three. The construction duration will be about twenty-one months. In terms of public outreach, we still do have a public website, yes, and as Bob reminded me to let you know, just Google Pinellas County Beckett Bridge, and you can find it. It's a lot easier than the actual address. It does have the project schedule on there, and we will update it if that changes, and it also has some of the architectural renderings that were developed during the aesthetic, one of the work where we developed aesthetics with the community during the design phase of this project. We also plan to have a general pre-construction meeting for the public, hopefully at the yacht club again, where that won't be until we get a contractor in board so that we can update you on the construction schedule as well as what the final bridge would look like, which is basically based on those renderings. And that's anticipated, hopefully, in the winter of two thousand twenty-three. So that's all I've got, unless you all have questions.
If you could go back to your previous slide and point out some of the accessory structures that you have for the residents. I know there were some enhancements that were taken into account for some of the things that the residents.
For some of the width. Yeah, so one of the things is that the bridge is eligible for listing in the National Register, so we went through a lot of coordination with SHPO and the Historical Society at Tarpon Springs, and it was determined that to mitigate for the impacts to the bridge that we had to do something. So one of the things, and it's hard to see on that picture, I'm trying to think if it's on one of the other slides.
You have a pointer on that as well, so.
All right, where's the pointer, Bob? Oh, how do I do that? Okay. So you can't really see it very well, but right here, and there's pictures on the website, and this is a part, I'm sorry, it's hard to see on this particular view, but there are better renderings on the website that show it very large, and a part of the bridge that's very important to the historical significance of the engineering is going to be mounted on the bridge with an explanation for people to understand the historic significance. And then we have these overlooks. As you can see, one here, and there's one on the other side that are covered, where people can come off of sidewalk, and they'll be able to overlook. And in one of those, we'll also have a station that will have a word, my brain just went blank of what you call them, but, you know, the little kiosks that will have information at the bridge, and then you'll be able to use a Q. R. code, and that will take you to the county's website if you want to know more about the history of the Beckett Bridge. And again, all of that was required by the State Historic Preservation Office. So that's probably the biggest amenities in terms of things that, why, pardon the reason why the bridge is wide.
And the bridgekeeper, I think you may have pointed that out, the bridgekeeper's station, is that that little white building there?
Well, the equipment for opening and closing the bridge will be in this, on this side of the bridge.
Right there.
But they won't be there, you know, you have to call two to three hours ahead. The opening schedule will remain the same.
Okay, all right, thank you. This is a presentation, so I'm going to ask the commission first if you've got any questions, and then I'll ask the residents that are here if they have any questions for the, for the county. Go ahead, please.
Although, believe me, I live on Chesapeake, so I strongly approve of anything we can do to alleviate the drainage issue. Was there any ecological consideration given to draining it to Kramer as opposed to draining it into the, into where the bridge is? From my perspective, living on Kramer Bayou, it's somewhat of a, it's tidal, but it's somewhat of a closed system. It does not flush well, and there's been some concern in conversations I've had about the road runoff because we're expecting increased traffic as well with the new bridge, and just... And just the overall effluent from the gas and oil and stuff and build off of the payment washing into that bayou and maybe further damaging the ecological structure. So was that taken into consideration at all or was it just a design consideration because you didn't interfere with it?
I think the primary region was the drainage. I mean, the way that the drainage flows through the system and the way that the system was designed, that was the place that needs to be outfall. There were like three different alternatives. It's been a while since they've looked at all of them. And this ended up to be the best from the drainage standpoint. I mean, at the outfall, there will be a sump that will help collect some of the sediments and, you know, help keep some of the water, some of the debris and things from coming into the bayou. And, you know, obviously this is, gets permitted, so hopefully, I mean, we don't anticipate any substantial impacts to the bayou from the runoff. But I do understand your concern.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
The drainage basin is the same, you know, before and after. So the existing condition is draining in the same way that it'll drain for the proposed condition. And we are including some backflow preventers, which, you know, that's going to help with the tidal, the tidal condition of that drainage area.
Anything else? Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I actually have a similar question to Vice Mayor on that. So if you could elaborate a little bit further, I know one thing, I just want to understand, like, how do we prevent the pollution from hitting the bayous? And that's one issue that we have in Tarpon Springs is the runoff in our older streets and roads. And so can you elaborate a little bit further on what's catching the sediment and the debris? Is it a baffle box or is it something that's similar to that or what's actually catching it? Do you, can you have any more details on that?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of details I can put on, you know, just because I didn't do the drainage design. But I do, I can say there is no baffle box. It's just your traditional drainage system that's taking care of that.
When you say traditional drainage system, it's just straight flow from road to bayou?
I'm sorry, we are capturing as much as we can with a swale system on, you know, coming off of the roadway. But when we have a curb and gutter system, it's going into the pipes.
Okay.
The swales, the swales allow a lot of that, the sediments and the oils and everything to get captured in the soil before it gets down to the pipe. But it's all ultimately the water is draining to the pipe.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would express concern still with what Vice Mayor Lent was talking about. And as a board, I'm not sure where we could make some recommendations or encouragement. Obviously, there's a grant opportunity here and there's some penny money. But hopefully, maybe the city might be looking to partner at some point too. But it's our water as a city that we're trying to protect and make sure that it's there. And Bob, maybe you could get in a little more detail on how that works from the drainage standpoint? Because that's the one concern that I have on this project. The second concern I have is the lack of sidewalks on the south side of Riverside. And it's, just to be clear, it's not the lack of right of way, it's the lack of wanting to acquire right of way, correct?
Yes, so we went through a whole study and explored that option, as you know, to look at acquiring a right of way on that side. And it was deemed unfeasible. It would have, it would have been very costly. It would have, there would have been displacements and the commission, or sorry, not the commission, but the administration at the county deemed that unfeasible at this time.
Sure, yeah, and I appreciate that. But again, it's Tarpon Springs that we're representing. And I know you didn't make the decision, but I think it's a poor decision by the county not to do that. The safety is obviously the number one concern in my book as a commissioner. I know you guys are just here to present on the facts of the plans and what they are. But I think the county administration really messed up on this one. There's a significant amount of school traffic, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic on this area. You've got to cross from one side of the road to the other. And it's just, it's a sad thing to me not to be able to see such a, or to see such a great project that's designed and miss such a big flaw in that aspect. But I appreciate you all as the designers and the engineers behind it. But I think the administration really missed the boat on that one. And I'll continue to let the county commission know about it.
I understand, and I will just add to that, that, you know, those crossings will have the RFBs, the flashers, the signs with the flashers on it to assist with those crossings and provide the safest way we can get pedestrians across at this time. The, as Ann mentioned, the bridge is set up so that there is a possibility to provide sidewalk on both sides if and when that right of way is acquired.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Carr, is that it?
That's it for me, Mayor.
Commissioner Eisner. Thank you, Mayor. So I hate to beat a dead horse, but I'm going to beat a dead horse. I agree with what the Vice Mayor just said and I agree with Commissioner Carr in his comments. Why couldn't we put in, and I know this is not your decision, but I'm just going to make a recommendation. Why couldn't we put in an oil box that stops oil or debris from going into the bayou and see if after six months or nine months or a year that if it's negligible, we can just leave it in the piping. But we could easily, it's not an expensive thing to put in as a monitor. So I would hate to put something in and then we realize that we're getting god knows what coming through. These are very easy to do. They don't make a Chinese restaurant without an oil catch. So any of these types of things, this is, especially we're doing a project this large, I would not want to see that we have a lot of water usually sitting there. And it's always sitting there with, you know, with cars going by and oil. And we would be negligent in allowing it to just flow into our bayou. So I don't see it being a big deal. I'm really, I know you're not prepared to give us an answer at this point, but I would definitely look into that. I wouldn't be comfortable changing floodwater into going anywhere unless it was monitored. Any variance that we give for a gas station or anything that's near a water source, we have to have areas to catch the oil from going in. So this would be silly. My question, we've gone from 28 feet wide to 48 feet wide. We've added 20 feet. It seems that most of the 20 feet that we added was for walkways that one side doesn't even have a sidewalk on. So I'm not understanding why that was made like that. And yet, the roadway that's 10 feet wide was 10 feet wide, will be 10 feet wide again when a regular car could go through. But I drive a truck. I know my truck almost touches the mirror of the truck coming in the opposite direction. So I don't understand why we did that. In addition, you have people moving boats through there because there's boat launches right in there. And it's, there's just no room for 10 feet. So by adding 20 feet, I don't know why we didn't add a roadway to at least 12 feet. Did you want to answer any, because I have more.
Sure, I can address, just to go back to the drainage real quick. I know Ann mentioned it. As part of that drainage outfall, there is a sump. And that's where, you know, in addition to the swales, that's where we're capturing those pollutants as well. And, and of course, the project was fully permitted, you know, through SWFMA, the permitting agency. As far as the width of the bridge, we currently do not have a shoulder on the roadway. So you have 10-foot travel lanes and then a barrier. Yes, we did put the sidewalks on because also, as Ann mentioned, the, the bridge is considered functionally obsolete. And that partly is because of those widths, because the 10-foot without the shoulder and then the substandard sidewalk widths. Obviously, those sidewalks don't meet ADA standard in any capacity right now. So the proposed bridge, and I'll let Ann correct me on this, is now we're providing that shoulder width. And so that is a recover area.
Yes, and the other thing to remember is that there are, there are a system of trails in the area. Some are proposed, some are under construction. Some of them, if you look on the MPO's map, are just the, you know, shoulders on the road. And eventually, when other development may occur, it's possible that the sidewalk could be extended on the south side of the roadway and provide connections. So that's the other reason why we have the two sidewalks. And I also wanted to just mention the reason you didn't, we didn't make it wider. One of the reasons is the wider we make it, then the more potential impacts that we could have to the properties on either side. So we, you know, worked very hard to keep this within the existing right of way, except of course for the construction easements.
See, I, my thing is, the north side of the bridge has a sidewalk on the west side. Doesn't have it on the east side because that's the yacht club. So if we were to continue the sidewalk there, there wouldn't even be any crossings. I'm not understanding why we have a six-foot sidewalk on each side of the bridge when on one side of the bridge you have the RV park that has no sidewalk, nothing there. And even if you go on the other side of the bridge, it's only a very short sidewalk. So you still have to go to the other side. I'm not understanding why we have sidewalks of six feet wide on both sides is my question.
The sidewalks on the approach roadways through pumps, they will be improved on. In front of the yacht club, we will have sidewalks with the proposed bridge on both sides.
Right, so then why do we have a six-foot sidewalk on the other side is my question?
On the south, on the west, east side, west side?
It's on the south side.
East of the bridge or west in front of the Tarpon Springs?
The bridge.
Yacht club?
It's on the side of the RV.
Oh, we don't have it there because it would have required us to acquire in parcels. We would have had to acquire some of that right of way in order to put sidewalks.
I understand, what I'm saying is there is no sidewalk there, so why do we have?
Oh, so why do we have it on the bridge?
Thank you, yes.
I didn't do a good job of explaining that before, but the reason is that in the future, it's possible that the development will change in that area and that new development will come in and there could be a sidewalk on the south side of the roadway. And it's much harder to retrofit a bridge to add the sidewalks in the future.
So the four-foot shoulder, is that, could that not be just 12 feet on each side or 13 feet on each side so that there's more room? I'm not, again, I'm not understanding why there's a shoulder. What is, what is the purpose of that?
The 10-foot, I'll go back to the safety thing we were talking about, you know, the traffic that goes across and the pedestrian usage as well. Well, by keeping the lane width narrower, it's going to allow, it's going to prevent travelers from exceeding the speed limit. And so that's, that's one way the roadway designers achieve that is by keeping it narrow. Now, we add the shoulders because again, that's another safety feature is so that there is extra width as it should be needed by emergency vehicles or, you know, even passing boats.
Because basically, right now, it's so narrow that if you've got two cars in each lane and there's an accident on the bridge, there is no way for an emergency vehicle to get around. With the addition of the eight-foot shoulders for on each side, that's enough room that the cars could move over and, you know, to help, to allow emergency vehicles to get through. And this was one of the big safety features that was considered as well as meeting the standards that are required for shoulders by the DOT. And because we have federal money, we have to follow some of those requirements.
Doesn't have to make sense to me, to me it's.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, Penny, Commissioner Culias?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you both for the presentation. Thank you for explaining to us the Riverside portion of the project in which flooding does happen. I actually, I appreciate the width, the six-foot on each side. I frequently walk the bridge and it's very narrow. So being able to have that additional width is good for safety. How concrete do you think are you with the start date for that project? Because we have some big capital improvement projects that affect the main arteries coming in and out of town. And I know we as a city have to time it up right, so.
Unfortunately, it's all basically dependent on how long it takes us to acquire the easements that we're, that we need for construction. If that goes smoothly, like I said, then we hope that we can advertise in the spring and then at the end of 2023. If that does not go smoothly, there is the potential for delay. And then we just can't predict that at this point.
Okay, and if we were to start a, we have anticipation of starting a project for South Spring Boulevard and MLK come together. If that project had been started, is the county willing to delay the bridge project a little bit until we finished that capital improvement project there? Because it's just another main artery coming in and out of the city.
Yeah, I think that's something that, you know, we'll, we'll stay in contact with Bob on and discuss that, how those projects would work together. If we do end up getting this grant, you know, we will be kind of strapped to whatever schedule they give us as well. So we've got a lot in the air right now and we're just going to continue to coordinate. We've done a really great job. He's been amazing to be, to work with and bringing the projects together with, with the Tarpon side of it as well.
Okay, and this actually, this, that public outreach page where you actually showed the width of the bridge, you, you can see a truck that's sitting on, I believe, the shoulder on the south side. That's just the ability to show the width of the bridge overall and case in a, yes, that one. In case an emergency vehicle did have to come through, that those vehicles could move off to the right a little bit?
That's actually a parking area for the bridge tender. So when the tender needs to come and lift the bridge, then that's the spot that he'll be able to safely pull over to.
Just for them? Okay, thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I, just for information, when did you start on the design of this? Some time ago, I know, but do you have an idea?
I think probably 2018, yeah, 2018, because the PDNE concluded in 2017.
About four years ago, yeah, four years ago, okay. I think it might be helpful for the commission if they get some, a little more information concerning the drainage along Riverside. I don't see a whole lot of detail. There may be some collection box already, there may not be, I don't know. I understand the polishing with the swell and everything, that, that's not an unusual thing that you rely on. So, but it would be helpful with the commission and I'm sure if there's some additional questions, they'll follow through with the city manager through Mr. Robertson to you.
Yes.
But I very much appreciate your presentation tonight. I'm going to ask the residents, the public that's here and also remote access if they've got any questions. If you could just stay right there, please, thank you. Are there any public comments?
Peter Lex, 514 Ashland Avenue. Couple of questions with regards to what's been discussed about these swales and boxes and collecting stuff. Who will be responsible for monitoring what's collected and maintenance for that? Would that be the county or the city? Want to go back to something that I haven't seen touched on, the relocation of utilities. The pipes, from my familiarity, go along the bridge. There's a water line and I guess there's some underneath. So if you're going to have to move them north of the yacht club, that means somewhere coming down Riverside or, well, North Spring at that time, I guess, changes to Riverside. You're going to have to move that line in and out, north, cross underneath the river, I'm assuming, because you're not going to want to put a pipe across. And then somewhere on the west side of the bayou there, you're going to have to run a pipe down to connect to whatever you have already flowing. So I'm seeing zip, 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 zip. Now, I'm not seeing plans, but just from knowledge of water flow, right angles are not good. So what's the plan for moving the utilities? Where they're going to go? How they're going to be laid into the water? I'd like a little bit more details about that. Because to me, that, that can be a big construction issue. Now, as far as the sidewalks from, and it's too bad you didn't have the graph that you can see in the paper where it shows the, all the lanes and stuff. But I'm assuming from what I'm hearing that when you come west across the bridge, there will not be any sidewalk on the south side of Riverside, but there will be a sidewalk on the north side. But if you know that area, just after you pass Chesapeake a little bit, as you get to the bend, the sidewalk ends. And the sidewalk is actually on the south side. So I'm not sure, when you're saying a sidewalk on the north side of Riverside, does it continue all the way down to where it currently ends? Or are you going to have to extend that sidewalk further along the bayou and then come around by Old Andy's House and where it bends back around? And all that's mangroves and if you drive by there. And if you drive by there now, high tide, it's all flooded. So I'm not sure if that's where you're talking about putting in sidewalks. Because the sidewalks on the south side of Riverside currently are functional, it's just you have that one gap between, you know, where the road is straight along, you know, the Mobile Home Park and the first couple of houses, but after that, I guess it's just before Mr. Zimbels' house, there, there's a sidewalk there. So I'm a little confused about all this placement of sidewalks, but more concerned about the utilities, thank you.
Mr. Robertson, would you like to start with the utilities and as far as the sidewalks?
Sure. The utility question, very simply, it's a pair of horizontal directional drill installation and construction techniques to drill underneath the river. So there's a smooth transition to, to make the adjustments that we need to make. But it's basically moving the force main and the potable water line outside of the bridge right away so that the new bridge can be installed without conflict of the existing pipes. Regarding the sidewalks, I'll ask Aaron or Anna to address that. No? Did you want me to address the sidewalk?
Right, I, I just wanted to simplify, the, the utilities are going to be placed through a directional bore on the north side of the yacht club at an easement, and then it's going to cross the, the Tarpon Bayou at that location at an angle, and it's going to meet up, is it on the east side or the west side of Chesapeake?
It's on the east side.
On the east side of Chesapeake, just before the intersection of Chesapeake and Riverside Drive. That's where it's going to reconnect. There isn't going to be any kind of right-hand turns, it's going to be curves if anything. And Mr. Robertson, the depth below the bottom of the, do you have an idea on that?
Yes, it gets to as deep as 50 feet below.
50 feet?
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll be 50 feet below the river bottom on its way over to the, where it would pop up again, right to the east side of Chesapeake? I, I think that clarifies a little more if we could just say something on the sidewalks. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Yes, we won't be extending the sidewalk on the east side of the road all the way around the curve, as the gentleman was concerned about. It would only extend, I think, to Pompous. So it's just basically approaching the bridge. So our construction does not go that far. It's just to tie it into the sidewalks on the bridge and then provide for future expansion of sidewalks.
Thank you. More public comments, please.
How many months did you say it's going to take? 20 months for completion?
Twenty-one.
That's what I thought I heard, I wasn't sure.
About 21.
About 21?
Yes, that's.
Well, who's going to coordinate with the Pines County School Board for the buses? How they're going to come in and out and go to the schools out in Sunset Hills? Because if they start going around the bayou, we know how close the water is to the edge of the road and a lot of it sinks in. So who's going to coordinate? Does the city do that or the school board with the county?
No.
Because I asked about that every year at the beginning of school.
Yes, they're, they're well, they're well aware of what's going on since this process has started. They've been involved in this process as it goes, so, so they've been involved, as far as I know, since the very beginning of the project. And realize that the adjustments and, you know, it's been so long, it's, it's probably been well planned out of what their adjustments have to be to compensate for that closing down for that long a time.
I was just wondering about school buses and then those trees, the big trees around the curves, they're historic trees. I can bring you books that Thomas Craig and his brother had a friend of theirs write and they drew the pictures in. They're so old and they were put there so they wouldn't speed around the curves with their Model As in years. And sometimes they want to cut them down, come up and fuss about it. And I don't know if y'all have intention of cutting down some of those trees. I'd like to know. So I can get the books to you and see how old they are and the historic issue of the trees. Because I remember when Mr. Ellis came up and wanted them all cut down and we had to say no. So are y'all going to cut down many of the trees?
If you're asking the mayor of Tarpon Springs, I have no plans on cutting any trees down.
If you go around, there's some, there's some big trees.
You're talking about the Washingtonian palms?
No. The, not wax, I forgot what they call them.
Eucalyptus, yeah.
Eucalyptus trees. They were planted many, many years ago. I just wondered if they were intending even the palm trees too. Yeah, but they're not going to touch those yet.
Can we move on?
He said they're not going to touch them, so that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there, are there any remote access comments?
Please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. That closes the presentation. Thank you very much for coming this evening. All right, let's go to public comments for about eight minutes and then we're going to have to switch over to our ordinances at 7:30.
Last time coming up, I'm going home to watch Trump. I would like to ask the mayor and the commissioners in the City of Tarpon Springs if they will write a letter of safe passage for our band going to New York. When I was on the board, I did it for the scouts, did it for the band, and it pays off because you tell them about the city and how proud you are of our young students and the band. And I remember the late Andy Salavera's had some visitors from the Macy's Company in New York with that letter and he went to their restaurant. And because he put in there, beware of Greeks bearing gifts, he had to give them a free meal, he said. And he took them around and so did Mr. Suvlakis. That was the first time the band went to march in the Macy's Parade. And I would like to see the City of Tarpon Springs, if we have time, to write one tomorrow. Everybody can sign it and send it to the, to the school for the bandmaster to present. And it also brought a lot of publicity. There were only two or three cities that did that. Our Rotary Club is writing one, I'm going to the chamber tomorrow and I've been to some businesses, they're writing letters of safe passage. It's just something that's nice to introduce Tarpon, to introduce the students and thanking them for bringing Tarpon Springs back to the parade and it's, it's a good gesture. So I don't know if you want to do it, but it would be very nice if the city would do that.
There, there is a send-off event and we'll probably have a letter of safe passage presented to them at that time.
Very good, very good, thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
My name is Stephen Thompson, I live at 615 Haven Place, Tarpon Springs. I have complained multiple times about cars illegally, illegally parking on the sidewalk. I've been here a couple of times, I've talked to the chief, I've talked to the mayor. The mayor told me today that he can't do anything because he's just one member of five. Well, all of you commissioners, except for this young fellow, this young, young fellow here with the black hair, in a few years, you're going to be old. Some of you are pushing it now. How are you going to feel when your wife or you are in a wheelchair or you have to use a walker? You have to use a crutch or a cane or your just plane don't walk very well and you're having to dodge around illegally parked automobiles? You too, chief. What if it's you or your wife, having to dodge around illegally parked vehicles when you no longer are the chief and you can't do anything about it? Now, the American Disability Act is supposed to help handicapped people. There are a lot of handicapped people in Tarpon Springs. The people of Tarpon Springs pay for those sidewalks. They pay to maintain those sidewalks. I think they should be able to deserve walking up and down the sidewalks. Okay? The mayor can't do anything by himself, so I'm hoping some of you commissioners will get together with him and actually do something about illegal parking on the sidewalks. The citizens pay for them, they should be able to use them. I bet if you did a survey, you would find that they would agree. I bet if you ask these people here, they would say yes. Please fix the illegal parking. I've complained 100 times, I bet. The people at dispatch know me by my voice. I've talked to the chief, I've left messages on his phone. I'm aggravating the mayor, I know. Calling him, I'm aggravating the chief, I'm sure. Please fix the sidewalk parking. It's illegal per state law. The state made it illegal for a reason. I'm sure you guys can figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Peter Lex, 514, and just to confirm what Mr. Thompson just said, riding my bike down to Sunset Beach sometimes, going down Gulf Road on the west side of Florida Avenue, you get run into that and it's not the only place. Welcome in. Now, for those of you familiar, I have a reading for you tonight, Genesis 11 through 14. And just as an introduction, this is the account of Noah. Now, the earth was corrupt in God's sight and was full of violence. God saw how corrupt the earth had become, for all the people on earth had corrupted their ways. So God said to Noah, I am going to put an end to all people, for the earth is filled with violence because of them. I am surely going to destroy both them and the earth. So make yourself an ark of cypress wood, make rooms in it and out and coat it with pitch inside and out. You know the rest of the story. And when he talks about violence, I know we tend to think of fighting, violence, but it's also violence against God's creation of the earth, pollution, overdevelopment, destruction of our natural resources in a wanton way where we leave our earth more violently attacked. So I brought that as a discussion to lead into a little bit of what I'd like to also discuss. This was October 26, just a little bit after Ian, but before Nicole. Can Tampa Bay survive a Cat 5 hurricane? Now, while back after Ian, I sent the board and I spoke about it at one of the meetings and opinion from a professor of geology and environmental studies from Maryland stating how it's important to not only look at building codes for wind and structural things, but where you place development. So in this article, a couple of paragraphs from the end, "Building safety is as much about where you build as how you build," said Robert McLeod, Director of the School of Architecture and Community Design at the University of South Florida. Buildings located on the water or directly in the flood plain face the greatest threat. As climate change poses an increasing risk to coastal communities, McLeod said municipalities and developers in Florida need to seriously reconsider building in these areas. I don't think we can rely on building codes to solve this problem. We have to build with a certain respect for the reality of the environment. Nature is undefeated. It has never lost and it won't. So in my closing, I would like to say that now we have a supermajority in our legislature of Republicans that have been giving us for the last 20 years more and more leeway to developers. And if you read some of the stuff coming out now, some of the people that have been elected want to make things easier for developers. So you are going to be our last bastion of defense. And I will warn you, we dealt with it before, Mark going to contest to it and some of you have been around. This legislature has no will in letting up on trying to stop our home rule. You know about it, about Airbnbs and so many other things that have come up that have limited your discretion on deciding what happens in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are rules of procedure allowing me to continue on this particular agenda item to its completion? Is there, are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is ask the commission's indulgence if we could waive our rules of procedure for the 7:30 start time so we can get the consent agenda out of the way. That allows us to do that. If I could have a motion, if, if you're, if you're inclined to do so, in a second, so we can waive that just for the purpose of getting the consent items out of the way. There is no ordinance that's relying on anybody that would be here from the outside, they're all city ordinances.
Motion to alter the procedure to consider the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda item. First, let me ask, are there any items that you would like to have pulled? Just number three. Number three. Are there any other?
Mayor, I didn't want to pull anything, I just wanted to disclose ex parte communications on one of the special events.
Okay, that's fine. I don't know that that's, unless there's some conflict on voting, I don't think you need to worry about ex parte communication. So you're, you're fine. We're going to pull item number three, so what I would like to do is have a motion for approving 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Those are attorney's fees, Unisalsman, Jensen, PA invoices, and there's several of them. Item 2, special events, light up the bayou. And B, Joe Pappas Memorial Music Festival. Item 4, award final purchase of Corcat shelters utilizing Mamatee County Schools District Contract. Item 5, award single source purchase of Onbase software. Item 6, single source purchase of Sponge Boat repairs. Item 7, award single source purchase of Pierce fire apparatus. If I can have a, a motion to approve those six items. Yeah, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let me ask the residents, do you have any comments on any of those six items? Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments on any of those six items?
If anyone would like to comment on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Unless there's any comment by the commission, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, let's go to item number three, Mr., sorry, Commissioner Eisner.
Yes, this was just a quick question and I never got the answer to this. I just don't understand why we're asking for $130,000. If in the last 11 months, we spent 85. So if you do math, if you add another month to it, it would just bring it to about $93,000. If you want to be extravagant, you could be 100. I just don't understand why we're going so high the other way. I know it's not spent money, it's an allowance. So that was my question.
I imagine it's because of the uncertainty of cost for parts, but I'll let our expert weigh in on that.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Currently, we are experiencing some major issues with the fleet. In the past couple of months, not just the Furman one in particular, but several older vehicles are requiring parts that are very hard to obtain. The parts prices have gone up significantly as well as the labor. And so this particular contract is a new award for the next 12 months and that we're just trying to anticipate logical budget. And granted, we haven't spent that much, but we want to anticipate any changes over the next year.
But you could come before us again to ask, that's my question.
It, it could happen. We could run into a situation where we expend that whole $130,000 and need an increase for parts, correct? And we're anticipating that that doesn't happen at least for eight months. I mean, we're hoping that all goes well with the fleet, but like I said, there's no guarantees on what breaks down in the future.
My reason for asking this is because it's, this is not the only thing. It's every single agenda item that comes before us is going up 30,000, 40,000, 50,000. I didn't bring up number seven, we just, you know, but that's the same question I could have for that as well. It's just, I would like to take baby steps rather than have a 40, 50,000 dollar. If you say that because this, these vehicles have some extenuating circumstances, and they're really in bad shape, I could understand it, but this is a lot, a lot of money. And, you know, each and every one of these items, you know, start to add up. And at the end, we have to deal with the residents of how much money we've spent. Is it, I then start questioning, is it worth the fixing? Is it worth putting all that money in? Or should we just start getting rid of it, or reducing, or changing? So I just don't feel comfortable going from 85 to 130. That's my thing. So, I mean, if the board wants to vote on it, I would probably go along with it as well. I just would like to take realistic numbers rather than just, and I'm not knocking your estimate. I would just like to see if it's 85,000 in 11 months, could be 100,000 dollars, not 135, so that's my.
Correct. And with that estimated budget, I mean, that's really just our placeholder. I mean, we only spend what we spend. If we don't spend 130,000, then the next year we will come back and readjust our budget. It's not that we're going to keep it at that level. There is a, you know, a fine line of, did we spend it? No, so let's bring it back down. And we expect things to normalize over the next year, I'm hoping. But again, like I said, we can't predict everything that happens in the next couple of months.
I'm going to get myself in trouble. I've never sent my wife out with 100 dollars, and she said, "I didn't spend it. I'm bringing you back money." So with that being said, I'm in trouble, right?
Probably are. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Mayor, and I understand Commissioner Eisner, your concern. At the end of the day, it's a blanket PO that ultimately says you could spend up to this amount. It prevents them coming back and asking for additional approval. I see what you're saying, let's approve 45 or 50,000 dollars, they need more to come back to us. I think it's just more operational from the city manager's side to say, let them fix the vehicles when they need to be fixed, and they'll spend what they need to spend. It might be a good idea also to connect with the city manager, and obviously, the fleet is a lot of money for our city. We have a lot of different areas from police, fire, to just the day-to-day operations of the fleet with water and sewer and just the other maintenance aspects, too. So it could be a good idea for the city manager to sit down or just provide a report to the whole board about this, because there's a lot of money that's spent, and you bring up a good point about the maintenance side of things, that it's not just Chevy. There's also been Ford, there's been some Dodge stuff, there's been some other items as well, too. So I think it falls under Tom, is that right, Mark?
Yes.
That department, so. I mean, I would actually like to see a little bit more. I know I've asked about that in the past, of what the expectation is of how often do you replace a vehicle? When, what's that break-even point at the mileage when maintenance becomes too much to where it's better to buy a new vehicle instead of replace it? I'm always more like, I'm going to run it to the ground 30,000, 300,000 miles, and then it hits the junkyard. But I understand there's more cost to doing that sometimes, especially when you have a large fleet. So that would be something I would like to see a little more information on as well, too, kind of the break-even analysis that you guys have from the operations side. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yeah, I mean, no comment.
Commissioner Kuyas, okay. I don't have anything. I think it sounds like something we should be talking about at budget time when this comes up, and I think Ms. Lewis is trying to hedge against unforeseen circumstances, which you've got older cars, that happens. And I think it's just as simple as that at this point. I think in following up with what Commissioner Carr is saying, I think if any commissioner would like to learn more about it, I would ask that they get with Mr. Funchen or his repair pool and see what information they have in that regard. Maybe that'll make everyone feel a little better about this. In any case, I'm going to go to the public on this. Are there any comments concerning this item? This has got to do with repair parts. Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to have a motion for item 3, Award File Number 230035-N-JL, Single Source Purchase of Chevrolet GM Original Equipment.
So moved, Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, let's go to ordinances and resolutions. Item number 14, Resolution 2022-45, Budget Resolution for Fiscal Year 2022 Closeout. Let's see. Ms. Galistecki, would you like to read the resolution by ordinance, please?
Resolution 2022-45, A Resolution of the Board of
Yeah, by title. That's correct, by title.
A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the Budget for Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that the following amendments are made to the fiscal year budget of 2021 to 2022.
Thank you. Yeah, in our procedure for these items, I misspoke, we read each of these, whether it's a resolution or ordinance by title, and then that allows us to get into the presentation. City Manager Lecorres.
Ron?
Okay.
Presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Ron Herring, Finance Director. This is Budget Resolution 2022-45, being brought before you to budget for items that were not previously budgeted for. And the fiscal year 2022 budget is the final budget resolution for fiscal year 2022, the previous year. It's cleaning up some last items. I tried to list the items on the cover letter there. Some of the major items are the hospital ER payment for when they built the hospital ER per the lease. The city was contributing some money. A lot of the other bulk of it is Hurricane Ian expenditures. We had right at the end of the fiscal year for Hurricane Ian. And we are going to get, you know, FEMA is going to reimburse us 100% for those expenditures. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Let me go to the public. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments on this item?
If anyone would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, I know I didn't ask you, and I usually do. Do we have any public comments at all by emails this evening? Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yeah, I just have one, and it's probably just, excuse me, my ignorance. There seems to be several items in here that are vacation buyback. Is that typical policy for the city to buy employees' time back if they don't take the vacation?
Correct. The city has a policy where employees can sell back some of their vacation time. And we especially, one of the big times is during Christmas for about three weeks, where they can sell back vacation money, and they can do it throughout the year. If you take a week off, you can sell another week. So yes, it's an unbudgeted item, because we never know how much they're going to use, and that's why that is on there.
And how long has that been policy of the city?
It's been, it's been a few years now.
It's probably past my times, that's 12, 13.
What, 45 years?
I mean, I mean, the time in this chair.
Yeah, it's been 15, I would say 15 years or so.
So is it typical within municipal governments?
Yes, well, it helps to keep down, we have, we keep a liability out there. We call it the compensated absences. So we keep, we reserve the money off, so yes, it is a common practice.
I understand it from a fiscal perspective. What I'm going to say is, I've been in industries before where we were in the position to buy back vacations. And what we found, and what there were studies on, was that when this occurred, instead of the employees actually taking vacations, we ended up with employees that were not operating to their fullest extent. In other words, the common belief is that employees need downtime. If they sell that time back to the city, it's washed financially for them, while it may be an increase for them. But I'm not totally convinced that it's not a detriment to the city to have an employee who doesn't take his full amount of time off.
Now, except for the three weeks before Christmas, every, the rest of the year, you have to, you will have to take time off. If I take a week off, I can sell back a week. So yeah, you are having to take a time off on the other, except for those three weeks.
So if I have three weeks vacation, I'm allowed to sell how much back to the city?
Just one week.
Just one week of the three weeks?
Yeah.
And you have to take one to sell back that one?
Right.
Have to take one to sell back one?
Correct.
So if I have four weeks vacation, I could take two and sell back two?
Correct. But that's the most you can do in a year.
But that's the most you can do in a year?
Yeah.
Okay. I just personally don't believe that's a good policy, but that's my, no comment.
Commissioner Carr?
I've just got a quick question about the revenue side, Ron.
Yeah.
There's a line that talks about the half-cent sales tax, it's $300,000 more than budgeted. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. So did that roll into this year's budget? Or is that just help cover some of this additional cost?
That's covering the additional cost from fiscal year 2022, the previous year.
Okay. So I mean, that's good news, we've got more money than we expected, right?
Correct.
All right.
I like it when it goes that way.
Yeah, I know. That was a little bit of a surprise to me, seeing that's some additional revenue. So I mean, it's a lot of additional revenue, actually, but thank you.
I think it was during COVID, and we weren't knowing what to expect, because the sales tax revenues went down, and so we budgeted a little bit more conservatively on the half-cent sales tax.
Sure. Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner?
I had a couple of questions, but we spoke the other night, so I really don't have anything to say right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Ron, I just want to ask about the first page, the Savannah Cove loan adjustment. What is that relating to?
Well, there was a Savannah Cove loan for $200,000 sitting out there, was due in 2054. There were some new owners that took over the property. We told them there's a loan out there that wasn't paid when the loan was initially done in 2004. So this, we got the calculation, we received, instead of the 200,000, which we would have had to wait until 2054 to receive it, we received 107,000 of that 200,000 dollar loan. The balance is just being written off.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything, Mr. Herring. Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Question approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. We're going to go to item 15, Ordinance 22, I'm sorry, 2022-31, Amending Charter Strategic Plan Implementation and Budget Priorities. Ms. Galistecki, if you could read the ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance Number 2022-31, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Submitting to the Electors of the City of Tarpon Springs, Proposed Amendments to Section 8 of Article 2 of the City Charter to Provide for a Public Hearing No Later Than June 30 of Each Budget Cycle for Budget Priorities, To Provide for the Implementation of a Strategic Plan for the City to be Updated Every Three Fiscal Years, Providing for Separability, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Codification, Providing for an Effective Date Hereof.
Thank you. City Manager Lecorres?
Yes, I told Renee that I would handle this item for her, since we had extensive discussion about it at the last meeting. Pretty much looking on page 2, the language for the budget cycle hasn't changed from our last meeting. What we worked on for some different wording, some additional wording for the strategic plan, you can see in blue on there, I'll read it. "To Review and Update Every Three Fiscal Years Beginning October 1, 2023, A Citywide Strategic Plan. The Strategic Plan shall be implemented and utilized for creating city policy, budgeting, and capital project planning in accordance with its mission statement, core values, and vision statement." The wording for this wording, of course, came from your input, so we said we had time to bring it back for another first reading. We've made those changes, and we think it's ready for the ordinance. And then subsequently, we'll be writing the language to put these on as a charter questions.
As a matter of fact, I know there was some discussion on the October 1, 2023. If you could, I know that's what I said, and there was some discussion on the commission in as far as synchronizing, but as far as I wrote your memorandum, so that would be up to you. But if you could decide why you're all.
Renee went back and looked at it, and the way it's written for the comprehensive plan, this language fits in perfect to be reviewing the comprehensive plan, starting this one. Remember, it says it will begin October 1, 2023, to move into 24. So this would be a perfect leadway where you could be reviewing the comp plan, and then going to strategic plan. And Renee said it works perfect for the schedule of reviewing those two back-to-back and not bunching them together and stuff. So this is, so planning looked at, and the timing works on it. For some of the concerns about the timing and the comp plan at the same time, this addresses that.
Okay. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? This is amending the city's charter for memorializing the strategic plan and also establishing a requirement that the public have an input in the budget priorities at the outset of each budget cycle, rather than waiting until the very end. Are there any public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I'm pleased, actually, that we're memorializing both of these, and I'm in agreement with the verbiages written.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I'm fine to support this tonight. I do think it's a good idea that it would go before the budget, but, I'm sorry, the Charter Review Committee as well. But with this section, I think the board has the right to move it forward. In the meantime, I think it would also be a good idea to put some type of resolution together, at least to codify it as some type of resolution for the board that regardless of the residents codify it in the charter, that it's still the board's wish, and to put it for future boards, that the public hearings will be had, and then the strategic plan will also be reviewed, too. So I touched base in the last meeting that there's the three different steps, a resolution, ordinance, and then charter. Obviously, charter is like the, once it's in there, it's the most difficult one to change from any board. But we could still put in, as a current board, a resolution, ordinance, to go ahead and put that in law for the city of Tarpon Springs, even before the residents vote on putting in the charter. I think that would also give it some additional
I understand.
I don't know what the correct word, but I can't remember the right word.
Confidence to the public that we're
Yes, that the board supports it.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I, as I said last time, I agree as it's written. I'm glad the public will have a say in what the budget is prior to rather than after. So I'm all for this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyas?
I'm happy to support both of these items tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think what we're going to find is after the, in December, we're going to have a number of ordinances that are coming forward that because of the advertising, we couldn't get to. And then after the first of the year, there'll be some new initiatives coming forward, getting ready for the referendum and stuff, and we can address Commissioner Carr's comments at that time. I think it's a good idea. I mean, the residents are going to want to understand what this is about, and I think we need to have a little further conversation concerning that for their benefit. That's all I have, the comments I have. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
I just wanted to announce that if this ordinance is approved on its first reading, the second reading will be held on December 6, and it will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November 23 of 2022. Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, item 16, Ordinance 2022-34, Designation of Flood Plane Administrator. Ms. Galistecki?
Ordinance Number 2022-34, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Section 6-64 amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Section 6-64.3, duties and powers of the floodplain administrator, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager La Course?
Yes, I'll start because my part of it's real easy because it's a real simple change of ordinance. The complicated part, I'll turn over to, to our, our building official, Kevin Powell, and fire chief. So let me do my part first, the, the simple change in the ordinance. The way this ordinance read before is the ordinance just came out and designated the building official as the, be designated as the floodplain administrator. It also said the floodplain administrator may delegate performance of certain duties to other employees. So it just spelled out in the ordinance that that's who it was, which may be a situation now where it wouldn't be. But the change of the ordinance is just to say that the floodplain administrator shall be appointed by the city manager, as opposed to just designate straight out a building official. To get why we want to make this change, it has to do with something after the ordinance is passed, something we'll bring forward to you. And that's where I'll turn it over to, to Kevin and Scott to, to talk about that situation.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Kevin Powell, Building Development Director. We're bringing this forward and changing the designation of the floodplain administrator to appointment by the, the city manager. And there's a couple of reasons. One, the floodplain management portion of the department has grown over the years. We're now looking at falling into a lot more emergency management. We had a meeting with FEMA yesterday and FEMA is going in this direction also, where they want floodplain administrators and emergency management to merge together. So by doing this, we'll also look at possibly lowering our CRS score. We've just lowered it once again. When I got here, four and a half years ago, we were at a seven with the potential of being suspended. We've taken that to a six, to a five. And now moving it into an emergency management umbrella, we can look at potentially getting that to a four without being more restrictive on the building side of it. In order for us to do that now, we would have to start being more restrictive in building of structures within the city, hire free boards and that type of thing. So we can go ahead and gain activity points through emergency management and, and those resources there, which they work hand-in-hand right now. And as, as we've gone through it, right now, Megan is our floodplain coordinator. She is in constant contact with the emergency management side of it, along with stormwater side of it. So everything is kind of encompassing in the one. And we feel that giving that designation to the city manager can put the right person in a position that's going to benefit the city. Right now, like I said, we've, we've been able to reduce our score. So starting April 1st, we're going to be a category five. You're looking at, that'd be about a 25% discount on an average flood policy. If, if we weren't in the CRS program, you're looking at $3.8 million savings by implementing these programs. So I think by putting it in more of an emergency management role, we're going to be able to bring an additional discount to our residents and there again, not being restrictive on our contractors developing within the city. Also having that position and the emergency management role, there's also grant opportunities out there. Not only are they going to be able to concentrate on the opportunities that we have within floodplain management side of it, but also look at the, the grant side of it, bringing additional grants to the city. We just feel that it's a, a better area to be in by an appointment for the position than keeping it in the building department and kind of locking it into that one area that we only look at building side of it. We need to step back and look at the entire city as a whole. And emergency management is part of that, building is part of that, stormwater is part of that. So that's where we're looking at changing that wording in there, that it's an appointed by the city manager and not by the building official because that's just going to be mainly, I believe, a, a building-related item. We're not going to look outside the box over there. So I, I just think that's a, a step in the right direction for that.
Good evening. Scott Young, Fire Chief. So this kind of started during Ian, when we were here for this. We talked about it, Kevin and I talked about it. We had been looking for the past few years to try to do something with a more permanent person in the department that was doing emergency management, to focus primarily on emergency management. It's kind of a specialty item. There's four phases of emergency management that we have to concentrate on. Mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. We can do the response. We have that down. Preparedness, mitigation issues, that needs to be worked on. We talked before about revamping the COOP plan, bringing it up to modern standards, our emergency preparedness plan. Some cities take that outside, pay consultants to do these plans, pay $50,000 plus. Lo and behold, we have somebody within our city that can do this. Megan has looked at him. She says, "I can do these. I can make these better." So we have somebody by doing that. So it's more cost-effective if we just transfer this person into our department under the emergency management branch without having to go outside and hire another person into the city. We just think this is a great, cost-effective move for the city. Helps with our training of the staff, community outreach programs we can start getting, enhancing and doing it better with. It's just a win-win, I think, for all the departments in the city to be ready for the next storm or COVID, whatever. They handle all these types of things. Rather than my staff trying to do the fire department stuff along with a little bit of the emergency management, now we would have somebody dedicated in the emergency management. Her primary role would stay as the floodplain manager or administrator. That would be the main part, but they're integrated now. That's what's happening. As Kevin said, FEMA is wanting all the cities to go this way with their floodplain coordinators or managers and make them part of emergency management. So we're just trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit and make this happen. So with that, we'll answer any questions.
Just if you could, where is this person going to be, they're going to be reporting to you?
If, if the reorg goes through, we would put them into the fire departments overall. They would be under us because we work hand-in-hand now. Megan's constantly always calling us for stuff, trying to say, "Do you have these types of things? Do you have this or that?" So we would just combine it into our department.
Non-bargaining?
Yes, non-bargaining, yes.
That's fine. I just wanted some clarification on that. Let's go to public comments. Are, are we done with the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
So, hi. So this person, as yet unnamed, is not cabin, obviously. Who, who is this person? That's going to be floodplain manager?
Megan. Megan Araya. She's the current.
Hand raised.
She's, she's our current floodplain coordinator. It would turn into a floodplain administrator role. She would still do the role that she's doing within the building department and continue on with the CRS, the community rating system. She'll still be working on that, but also in addition, be doing stuff on the emergency management side, what she's basically doing now. And then, like I said earlier, we just had a meeting with FEMA yesterday and FEMA is starting to push this where floodplain administrators fall into an emergency management role. And you're seeing more and more communities around us going to that. So when you have conference calls and all that, the floodplain administrators are within emergency management services.
Okay, so, let me see if I get this straight. Her, her job role isn't really going to change? We're just going to move her position over into the fire department?
Correct. It's not going to change.
And change your title from a floodplain manager to a floodplain administrator?
Correct.
Well, that's going to change because you're adding the emergency manager.
Right, you're adding the emergency management side to it. Her, her main focus is floodplain management, but now she's also going to incorporate.
I'm confused by the fact that you said that she was still going to be doing some building stuff.
As far as floodplain management, as she's doing now with emergency management, she still oversees the floodplain management role and it's really the community rating system where there's activities and, and points that we get to get a lower score. So she's actively involved in that. She's not as much as, as building, but she's housed in the building department and she works on floodplain management role from there. Yes, in building, we have floodplain that we have to take into consideration when we're building, free board and that type of thing.
Okay, so she's still going to be working with you on free board policies, et cetera, et cetera, but she'll be working from an emergency management administrator role that reports to Scott.
Correct, yes.
And we get activity points. It sounds to me a little bit like we're gaming the system, but if it's, you know, a plus for our residents, then.
Right, yeah.
Let me try to explain, let me try to explain it because it's a simple basis, which I understand why. It's real simple. By ordinance now, he's the floodplain administrator and he's designated her to do words as a coordinator. That's not the actuality now. In actuality now, he'll tell you, she's the floodplain administrator. But he has to be called it because of ordinance. Being the floodplain administrator, she, you know, the duties that incorporate, there, there is no other, oh, you're going to take her from building, so she's going to lose other duties. The job of being the floodplain administrator and to get that number down to a five, all that had to be done with, that's a person's job.
I, I think I got that part. Thanks, Mike.
So that's the difference. The ordinance really doesn't depict how it is now. We're doing some of what you said in the system now and we're trying to change the actuality of what's going because he'll tell you that, that she's really the floodplain, but we call her coordinator because of, of this ordinance.
Yeah, I understand. So is she going to be, she'll be reporting to you, Scott?
She would. She'd be under my department. She would have the emergency management division of our department and work on all the preparedness things, community outreach programs that we need to do. She'd be looking for the grants out there that come up during and after the storms. Like COVID, there was a lot of grants out there that we were trying to get. She'd work on those types of things. It would just enhance our emergency management department. And at the same time, we believe it'll help the CRS and floodplain management program because we'll have one person concentrating on both.
Yeah, I believe it probably will too.
Yeah, let me go back to mine too. When you see after this passes, in fact, the next item after the second reading will be this reorganization. The key is that the city manager assigns it wherever it is. For now, I'm bringing you a reorg to assign it to them because that's where all the new, everything she has to do. She'll be doing everything she's doing at building now. The new stuff will be under there. So at another time, another city manager or my, you know, another city manager in two or three years' accolade, it could be moved somewhere else. But right now, you'll see in the reorganization, that needs to go there because that's where she'll be picking up all the, the new, the new materials and the new stuff. There'd be no really need to sign a building because she'd be most of the time integrating the emergency management. So the reorg would, would at this time, put her on the fire department, which is the best place to put her.
One other thing to remember too.
Kevin, is there any, any of her responsibilities that are going to have to be backfilled because they're moving to this position?
No, it's the same position that's just moved. She's going to be doing the exact same.
Basically going to be doing the same job.
Doing the same duties there, but adding in the emergency management side. And like I said, as, as FEMA had our meeting yesterday, this is the, this is the avenue they're going. They want floodplain administrator and emergency management to merge together. So we're just kind of trying to stay ahead of that. And that, you know, majority of the jurisdictions in the area are going in that.
Okay, but I'm getting that sort of thing that she's going to be doing stuff for the building department, as she's going to be doing stuff for the fire department. Is this a non-departmental position?
And public work, she's also working.
And public work. So is this a non-departmental position that we're talking about here?
No, it's going to be assigned, but, you know, like a lot of other VARs, they, they work in different fields. Like I say, public works was included in some of the stuff she's doing now with building and public work. It's in, the floodplain manager extends more than one department. So technically, but you got to assign it under somebody, so.
It'd be assigned to Chief Young.
Yes.
I, I thank you. I, I think I've got most of my questions answered. Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. The ordinance makes sense. I've got no issues with that, that the city manager is the one to appoint the floodplain administrator. Also, the reorg, I don't, that's up to this, I think I really focused on the city manager and his staff to make those decisions. And so I think you guys brought a, a great proposition forward and you brought some great points up pertaining to FEMA and being, it's a strategic move, is what it sounds like. And Kevin, you, you said something that's really astounding, I think, that I would like to repeat a little bit more. Before you came on as a building official, the city of Tarpon Springs was close to losing certification and then also the, the rating. Can you touch base on that a little bit more so the residents understand? And I mean, this is something I think needs to be celebrated for you and the department and the city for the residents because that's a significant amount of money that the residents save on their flood premiums because of what the city of Tarpon Springs does within the building department and Megan with the work that she's done also in that, in your department, so.
Yeah, so every five years, you have a FEMA audit when you're a, a category seven or above. So when I came here four and a half years ago, I walked into a FEMA audit. I left a FEMA audit and then walked into another one here. Our FEMA program was not running properly. Our CRS program, I should say, was not running properly, the elevation certificates. Everything was out of order. We sat down with Megan and she took on that role for the CRS coordinator at the time. She worked very hard getting elevation certificates corrected. We did have to reach out at one time for a consultant to help out at, at that time period. We were able to save ourselves from being suspended from the program to actually lowering our score. So walked in here at a seven, worked very hard for several months and got everything straightened out and we were able to lower the score to a six. That put us into a three-year audit now because now we're, you know, considered a, you know, a good community. So now we're going to get audited every three years. So that comes around and for the next three years, Megan works hard at the various activities to get our score lowered once again. So during that audit, everything was gone through. We did not have to bring in a consultant this time as we did the first time, so we saved there. So, you know, being able to do everything in-house and, and Megan knows what's going on in there, support from the commission, support from the city manager in order to go ahead and get our score lowered once again. So she worked hard and got our score lowered to a five. So, you know, over a four and a half year period, we went from a seven with the potential of being suspended from the program, which means we would have gone to a nine and any discount would have went away. So we were able to maintain that and start lowering that. Every, every score was an additional 5% discount on that. And like I said, we're looking at, you know, just rough numbers from being a nine to, to a five. You're looking at 3.8 million in savings to our residents on flood insurance within the city. You know, that's, might be a few hundred dollars to somebody, but it's a lot to a lot of people.
Oh, okay.
So she's done a tremendous job at it and she does work hand-in-hand with emergency management, stormwater. You know, as, as we continue to grow this program, you know, it's, it's for our residents here that we're trying to get our score lowered and save them on their insurances and also for time of disasters. You know, we want to mitigate those problems early before there, there's problems later on. And, you know, to get those points for the future, going through emergency management versus being more restrictive on the building side. You know, I've had contractors reach out and say, "Hey, whatever you do, don't, don't get more restrictive on, you know, free boards and all that type of thing within, within the city." So we can find other ways to, to get those and, you know, get our score lowered and, and help our residents.
So every, every time you drop a point, it's another 5% save?
5%.
And it's a 5% savings on the FEMA policies?
On FEMA policies, yes.
Flood policies?
There's a 10% for non-flood hazard area and then it also gives a 10% discount for folks that are not in the flood hazard area.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to, I mean, thank you for doing that. Okay. Yeah, I just want to, I mean, thank you for doing that. Thank you for your work on this. That's something that is just behind the scenes that happens that is a huge thing for the city, for the city residents in the city of Tarpin Springs. So I think that needs to be highlighted. Hopefully, we could do something on our Facebook or, I don't know, make her employee of the year or something. But it's, to do that, that's a, there's not one person, I think, that really has that big of an impact to the residents' pockets outside of this position. So in full support of what you all are trying to do and continue to lower this to a lower point. And thank you for bringing this proactively and being strategic behind this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Megan. I appreciate what you've done. Whose budget does she remain on? Does she change over to the fire department?
Yes, she would change over the fire department budget. In actuality, we would get some money from the county for that salary because through our fire budget, the county pays for a percentage of that. So she would fall under that and a portion of that. I'm not exactly sure the percentage would be paid by the county for that position.
So then she would be in a position where she possibly could be making more money, no?
Possibly.
Okay. Because I-
Absolutely. If I don't, she'll be stolen by another city that's already-
You will be picked up by someone else.
That's okay. Thank you. Because, you know, I'm very strong about performance increases, you know, the kind of numbers that she's saved for the city, as Commissioner Carr said and, and everybody else has felt, you know, that, that's a savings that you just, I don't know any one person that can do something like that. So, you know, kudos to you. Thank you. Besides the fact that I see her at every event, working very hard to, you know, appease the residents. So thank you for that as well. I think you kind of answered all my questions, you know. That's good about being second to last. So thank you both for your contribution. It was a great suggestion. I'd like to see it go down even lower if we could possibly do it. And just once again, Megan, thank you. I, I know you've worked very hard. Thank you much.
Commissioner Kulias?
Thank you both. I appreciate, appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Soraya, for all the hard work you've done in, in getting our ratings down. After this reorganization, our current FEMA CRS rating is at a five?
Yes.
Okay, and how soon will we be audited again to see if we can get it down to a four?
Three years.
In three years?
We just finished our current audit. So in three years, we'll be audited again.
And we got that letter that the, the city manager shared to us, so we appreciate it. Okay, so thank you for the presentation and happy to support it. Thank you all.
Okay. We're going to see a reorganization resolution at the next commission meeting.
It'll be after the second, the second reading it passes and then you'll see.
So you'll have an opportunity to discuss this some more and, and if there's any other further questions on it, thank you very much for everything that you're doing. It's, it's, it's a complicated area and I know it's very easily could get tripped up as well. So thank you for paying attention to detail. That's all I have. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, roll call. Do we need to read, read the ordinance by title again?
No, it was already read.
Go ahead, please.
If this ordinance is approved on its first reading, the second reading will be held on December 6th of 2022 and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November 23rd of 2022. Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Definitely, yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Emphatically, yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, that ends the ordinances and resolutions. And what we're going to do is go back to the special consent agenda and item eight, award file number 230052, circadian cemetery mausoleum structural roofing repair. City manager, of course.
Yes, Paul Smith and probably also maybe a little bit Bob Robertson will, will do this presentation on something we've been working at for a while. Paul?
Thank you. Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This project is to perform structural repairs and roofing replacement for the cemetery's mausoleum building. The procurement department and project administration departments have gone through extraordinary lengths to bring this contract for your approval. We find the pricing as, as negotiated to be fair and reasonable under the circumstances and procurement and project administration staff are here for questions as well. Thank you.
What, what Mr. Smith said was straightforward, but it's a very complicated repair that needs to be done. I had a conversation with Mr. Robertson and let me just see if the public's got any questions first, then we can go to the commissioners and see if you've got any questions for Mr. Robertson. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the commission. And I know I had a bunch of questions, but let's see what the commission has.
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Carr?
Bob and Paul, just had a, what's the life expectancy of this new roof?
I think we can expect, sorry, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. I think we, we can expect 30 years or so on this roof. 20 to 30 is a reasonable range for this roofing system.
Okay. Is there, again, I know this is a significant amount of money being spent. Is there any other, well, is there any other alternative roofing system that would last longer than 20 or 30 years that is in the marketplace right now in Florida that you could, that's been evaluated?
For this type of flat roof, we got a proposal for two, two different types and we think the one that we're recommending, the lower, lower price version, is, is enough to, to satisfy a long-term need.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did look at this and I can see this is a, anytime you get involved in structural, it, it could get very, very hairy on this. Would they be changing? Because I read that you have pooling of water and the pooling of water is what disturbed the I-beams. Is that correct?
That's part of it. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So would they be trying to make a concave type I-beam out of it or a V, a slight V-shaped so that water runs off? And if not, would they then be in a position to make it a, a straight I-beam, but pitch the roof so that that water doesn't pool? Because all these things are retrofits. If you, if the I-beam wasn't rotted, you, it would be a cakewalk rather than what we're involved doing right now. So it's not whether the roof lasts, it's whether the I-beam lasts because that's really where the costs are coming in, correct?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I think what you're talking about is the parapet wall that the, the roofing system rests on.
Yes.
Yeah, so part of this repair includes a, we'll call it an extended flashing, that once that parapet wall is repaired and the concrete work is fixed, then this new flashing's going to cover that entirety to prevent any moisture from getting into it. So there's that part. And then the second part you're talking about is the drainage of the roof. There's a drainage system on both of the flat roof pieces on the two tower, two towers and repairs and upgrades and fixes to that drainage system are also included in this project.
Right, because it's the draining system, or I should say the lack of draining system that's created the problem in the first place.
That's correct.
So was it misdesigned when it was first put on or was it just a lack of knowledge? I mean, I, I know you weren't around back then, but have any idea on that?
I couldn't say. I probably was in middle school when this thing was built, so.
Okay. I'm just glad that it's going to be done correctly this time because otherwise, this is going to happen just again. So thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes. I'm not too crazy about the price, but I understand it has to get done. Is any water leaking onto those who have been laid to rest and that underneath that mausoleum?
We haven't seen a lot of evidence of that. We, we do see some that comes down the side of the building, which is why you'll see in there that we're addressing some of the granite facade. So we're going to pull that off, make sure there isn't any damage to the concrete underneath it. If there is, it will get repaired as part of the project and those granite pieces will be reinstalled. But to our knowledge, I, I don't think so. Have you seen or have you heard any reports of that, Paul?
That's consistent with what I was going to say, that it's mainly on the skin surface of the mausoleum building.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor.
It's quite a complicated thing. I had a little bit of difficulty with the price as well and, and we went through it and Mr., I put Mr. Robertson through his paces and he explained everything. And originally, the price, one approach was 560-something thousand. This one, we're down to about 411, I think. Is that correct?
422, yes, sir.
422. And then also, you know, we talked about maybe taking an alternative approach that would be less expensive, but then what happens is you, you make some kind of a, a repair like that and it's not done properly, you're right back doing it all over again at the higher price. So I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a, a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, item number nine, award file number 230042-C-AS fencing gate operators and handrails utilizing Pinellas County contract number 210031B parent BW parent A Tampa Bay area purchasing cooperative contract. City manager, the court-
Yeah, I'll go ahead and have you need to come up to answer any questions. This mainly is on here because it's a five-year contract and, and it's 300,000. So mainly it's on here instead of consent because of cost, but Ms. Lewis is available to answer any questions on it if you have it.
Would you like me to give a little background or?
No, Ms. Lewis, you're just there to answer any questions. Is that correct? Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jump. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I really don't have too many questions except for why do we spend $300,000 on, on railings and gates? I didn't know we had that many.
We have quite a few throughout the city. In fact, I can tell you in October alone, I just spent 30,000 on just the gate operations, you know, the chains and the, the systems itself. Those are quite expensive and if they're not installed properly, we will have to replace an entire system just to get it to work and function like it's supposed to. So we estimate that portion, that cost is 10 grand alone for one area. And then this also includes all the fencing, like we just did the fencing around Riverside Park. We did the, I think it's called powder coating. I'm not expert, but we did that black powder coated fencing and it, it does amazing things for the city. One, it beautifies the parks and it makes it look better. And two, it lasts longer. The third reason we like to use this contract is because this particular contractor in the past has normally held pretty, pretty decent pricing and they usually have materials on hand.
Okay.
No more questions for me. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, just to touch base on a couple items. So the city's done a really good job at replacing a lot of the old fencing that's been around for probably 40 years on a lot of the sports and recreation areas, at Dorset Park, at Sizzler Field, at Riverside Field. I do know there's, Riverside tennis courts are due to be replaced. I think probably the Craig Park tennis courts are probably due to be replaced. There's, might be some areas in Jasmine Field as well, but $300,000 seems like a lot, but when you extend it over five years, it could be eaten up pretty quickly. So again, this is not to exceed and then it would also fall into budgets for, for future years as well too. So it'd be up to the boards at those, at those times to allocate funds even to fulfill this in the city's budget at that time too. And then obviously, the city manager would be working with the operations team to decide what to bring forward if they need additional approvals. So I'm happy to support this one.
Commissioner Carr? I'm sorry, Commissioner Eisner?
Well, I too think $300,000 is a lot of money. I didn't know we had that many fences. You made mention that contractors install and if they install it incorrectly, it doesn't last. Do we have any warranties when they do an installation and if they do, aren't they responsible for their installation?
Yes, but on the older gate operators that were installed like years prior, we don't have warranty on those. On the new ones, the ones installed by this company, we do.
Do we have anybody that goes around and does maintenance and checks it before it breaks?
Well, I can't answer that question. I'd have to defer to Public Works.
And they do.
Okay. Do we have like that on a timely schedule so that we know, you know, because I, I just think to spend, you know, $300,000 or to, if, if we have a project to do and we're going to utilize it, I understand, but $300,000 for maintenance is a lot.
Is, I mean, is there a question that you'd like Ms. Lewis to answer or?
Well, the, the question is, is there any major project that we're going to utilize this $300,000 for? Or is this just to keep on hand?
It's a little bit of both. It's budgeted projects for fencing around the city and then it's also for replacing mechanics of the fences that goes along.
Right, but when you say around the city, what I wrote here, it seems like a lot for no facts. That's, so when you say a lot around the city, I don't know exactly what you mean. That's why I'm asking if there's anything specific. Are we replacing the circadian? We, you know, do we have a projects in mind that we're putting this $300,000 towards?
I would have to go back to the budget and check that fact for you.
Again, it remembers this year's budget and the budget for the next five years.
I, I still would like to know what we're going to utilize it for, you know? Do we have a list of, of what mechanical gates are not working?
Again, that would come from Public Works and I'd have to get that from Tom Funchen.
Well, those are the questions that are, I, I would like to have answered. I just don't know if I want to agree to, you know, I, I don't want to stop the wheels. That I'm not looking to do. I just want a reason of why we're, we're putting $300,000 in, that's it. It, it just seems like a lot, a lot of money for, with, with no facts of where it's going to go.
This, this is a, you know, $300,000 is a cap?
Yes.
And it's, and it's basically something like a, a repair fund and whatever else is needed. So we're not spending the 300,000, but the contract with this particular purveyor, the county purveyor would be up to $300,000. And then it could be a lot less than that on a particular year. Could be, you know, in other words, over the five-year period, we'd anticipate $300,000, but on an annual basis, it could be a lot less than that. I'm not sure how to explain it. We're not actually spending the 300,000.
I know. I know that.
Yeah. So, and, and to answer your question, as far as the actual, the actual budget shows what the, the repairs are going to be made out of each department for fencing. So the answer to that should be in the budget. I would suspect in the workup to the budget that we did, there would be specific tasks that would be done for the budget amount. Maybe you can speak to that a little bit more right now as far as-
And for this year's budget, we could pull those out and get those, those to you as what's actually for this year's budget.
Right, and next year would be next year's budget. We would be looking at that in, in the budget. I'm not sure that's the only way I can explain it to you. I mean, this is for purpose of-
Do we have an idea of what last year's expenditures were on fencing?
We've got Ron here and he pulls a lot- We've got Ron here and he pulls a lot out of his head. I'm not sure, this is a tougher one to pull out of his head. He remained.
Fun down.
Also, I want to make a correction. I'm reading the contract here. It's four years we're talking about, not five.
I know you're talking about recent, I think last year, we just, and again, with everything else, the costs are going up. Sizzler Field, I think the fencing for that was, it was over a hundred thousand for that fence. I think we originally budgeted lower and I'm thinking, I'm hesitant to say it came to about a hundred and forty thousand.
Sizzler Field was a whole special thing. It was not general city stuff. Let's redo the whole ballpark thing.
Yeah, but that would, that would fall under the.
It would. So the reason that that one, the reason the last few came separately to the board was because we were not under a contract with Smith Fencing. They wanted to redo their bid. So we have a new, this is the new award. Last year, we didn't have one in place for part of the year.
I'm going by memory for the budget. I think there's fencing in the budget this year for Dorset Park. I'm trying to remember if there's some fencing for Riverside Field.
Yeah, we already did that, right? We already installed the Riverside. Do you remember the cost of the installation for the Riverside field?
Fifty thousand is coming to mind there on that one. Fifty, sixty thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Was that, we were with you as far as comments go, right?
It just still doesn't answer my question. And I feel strange going forward, not knowing where this three hundred, I know it's not being spent, believe me. I know this is just, you know, put aside so that you can contract off of it. But I still don't know where you're using the three hundred thousand for. And, you know, we don't have any Sizzler Field project going. I know we're looking to do something in Riverside on the tennis courts, but that's separate from what I understand. That was a separate two hundred thousand dollars with, you know, the courts and everything. So I don't know of any major project that we need to have that amount of money or, you know, put aside for. That's, or is it, you know, what automatic gate is opening that needs to be replaced? Are there any of them broken now?
Can I ask Janina maybe to explain what the difference is? If we just bring these forward every sixty, every forty, every thirty thousand and we just bring them forward and do it? Or the advantage that we have of doing a contract like this? Maybe that helps of why we're not just bringing these costs if they're above the amount that the commission has to sign off on? And it goes to the commission every meeting that happens? What is the advantage from a purchasing angle of having a contract such as this over there? Because I think that's the whole case, to not piecemeal it and have a better advantage of having a four-year contract that we can go to for any of these costs that we anticipate for the four years.
Well, the first part to Commissioner Eisner's question about the gate operators, we just did a cemetery gate for ten thousand. I can tell you, the total cost for the opening, closing, whatever that mechanism is, we just did a purchase. That alone was ten grand. That's not even fencing or anything. That's the pieces, the parts, the installation, removal of the old pieces. So that's that part. And we have several of those type of gates that are in the city, like wastewater treatment plant, the RO plant. Several of these have those types of operations and they're quite expensive to maintain. And the fact that we use, we try to use these type of contracts. One is that the pricing is a little more set because it's over a longer term. And when we see a trend that departments keep coming to us with these onesie-twosies purchases that need to come to you, we try to consolidate and make it like a citywide program so that we can make it just one big purchase towards the board for approval instead of bringing each individual item. I don't know if that maybe answers the question that you're looking for.
I don't want to argue the point. You know, what happens is, we do approve large items like this, but it doesn't matter. It comes before us and eighty-five thousand turns into a hundred thirty thousand. So they do come in as add-ons anyway. So that's why I just, you know, I don't follow the thinking unless you were gonna come in and tell me that you have fifteen of those ten thousands that need to be replaced and the rest is gonna be utilized for, you know, items in and around the city. I just feel uncomfortable signing off on three hundred thousand dollars. That's just me. I'm a steward of the residents' money and I just, you know, we just, we just agreed to four hundred somewhat, four hundred twenty thousand dollars for the cemetery thing. And, you know, I'm sure we all, I know what it, why it is so expensive. This one, I don't understand why it's so expensive. I just don't. So, I mean, and that's exactly what I wrote. I'm reading to you what I wrote. There were no facts to justify the three hundred thousand dollars, other than it's gonna be till June twenty-first, twenty-six. But what do we have between now and June twenty-six that would absorb that amount of money? I, you know what, I know that contractors like to have that there. It helps when they make their bids. So when, you know, when I know what I'm able to bid for, you know, and I'm trying to conserve and save the residents' funds, not just sit and spend it. So unless I know what I'm agreeing to here or what for, I'm not comfortable with it. And I may be outvoted, but.
Okay, Commissioner Kuyas?
Thank you, Mayor. Janina, this three hundred thousand that's gonna be for the next four years, it's about seventy-five grand a year. We just verified that the Riverside field alone, just the three sides to connect that, was about sixty thousand dollars. This, this doesn't, is this all metal fencing? Is it vinyl fencing included, plastic fencing? Is it just limited to one type of fencing?
No, there are several types of products on the contract.
Okay, and with that, that means any building, any city-owned building that may need fencing, any retention pond that may need new fencing, any lift station that may need fencing? City staff can go ahead and purchase to fix those, all with included within that three hundred thousand for the next four years?
Yes, and by having the contract already in place, it kind of gets the work moving faster. And if the guy, like I said, he usually has the materials on hand, we're not waiting on any lead time.
Okay, so I think that gives me a better understanding of what it's not only limited to when it comes to the fencing and what areas of our city. I just, I'm willing to support it. And that way, as budget season comes around, we do have that priority list where we see certain areas and stuff that need to be fixed. And let's let city staff just try to, you know, address in a priority manner what needs to be fixed from year to year. But I think this gives them the opportunity to use those funds towards all those different areas that we just talked about and just go from there. So, thank you all.
All right, Ms. Lewis, let me, let me go to Vice Mayor Lunt. He's got the light on. Do you have another question?
I'm sorry?
Did you have another question?
Oh, no, that was from before.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So it has here that in June twenty-second, twenty-one, there was a contract written for five-year period. So that should hold us to twenty-six, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so over here on the recommendation, it has that that there is a new contract to June twenty-one, twenty-six and its estimated annual amount not to exceed three hundred thousand. So you're kind of asking for three hundred thousand per year is what it's written?
Yes.
So it's not three hundred thousand divided over five years?
You're correct.
So I needed to kind of clarify what Commissioner Kuyas just said because even with that, it was only three and a half years and it would be eighty-five thousand. So this is three hundred thousand per year?
Yes.
I didn't even read that. I was concerned about three hundred thousand for five years. And now it's per year?
Yes, and like I said, it's project dependent and I don't currently have a list of the projects. But depending on the projects and what needs to be done throughout the city.
I can't support that. I couldn't just say that outright. I really would need to know what that goes to. Because now you're talking about.
One point two million dollars.
Thank you. That's, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, just a quick comment on my side. I mean, it's a significant amount of money. I one-hundred percent agree when you talk about the life of the agreement. But if you go back to the last sentence, purchase orders will only be issued against approved budgets. And it goes back to what was approved in the budget, the many hours I've spent on the budgets. And if you want procurement to start getting more granular in saying twenty thousand dollars at a time for these blanket POs, the blanket PO is there, it's common for blanket POs to be issued in the purchasing realm. It's not realistic to go up to that amount. And Janina, if you could, I mean, Smiths, it's not a requirement to use Smiths. If they come back with a bid that's outrageous, you could go and say, well, forget this. We're gonna go out and bid this three bids or four bids and RFP it and see what comes back. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. This is not an exclusive contract.
So this allows the city to move forward on the operations, doesn't hold up the operations. Again, it just goes back to the board, as our board that we sit on, we've already approved the fencing projects in the budget that potentially could change, but that's where it stands. So, I mean, blanket POs are common and it's, you'll see more and more of these as you sit on the board longer and longer. That's it.
I have another question.
Do you have the light on again?
I do, too.
I have more questions. I'm starting to read this contract in more detail. My apologies that I didn't read it in such detail before. But apparently, the cooperative participants of this contract are limited to two-point-six million dollars worth of purchases over the remaining term of the contract. And you're actually saying that you want half of that. You want one point two million dollars assigned to a contract that the county can pick up so much. But any other cooperative participants are delayed to two-point-six million dollars. And is it even likely that you're gonna be able to spend one point two million dollars on this? How many other people are gonna be cooperative on Pinellas County's contract? Or Tampa's contract, I'm sorry. I'm starting to get into the field with this.
So you're asking a question, is it realistic to assume that we're gonna eat up one point two million dollars of the two-point-six?
Is it realistic to assume that we're gonna be able, even if we said, go ahead, spend the money, get one point two million out of this two-point-six? It's, do you know how many other cooperative sign-ons there are to this contract?
Other than the ones listed, no, I do not.
All right.
Commissioner Eisner, you have your light on.
Back to me. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Carr, about that many of these things will be coming before us. But with that type of thinking, then I should be able to sign off on every, and I'm gonna just say it this way. Every proposal should come in and say, let's ask for a half a million dollars, we sign off on it. And then as you need it, you give us budget to approve for each one. I can't do that and I won't do that. I need to know how much you're planning on utilizing and for what it's gonna be utilized. And hopefully, your estimate is within reason and it comes in close to or a little bit under or over budget because that's what should be done. And if there is an over budget, you come before us. And, you know, I'm not looking to micromanage, but I'm not looking to sign a blank check for three hundred thousand per year and, you know, just sign off at one point two million dollars for no facts about what we utilizing it for. So I wouldn't sign that on anything like that. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, if you can help me out a little bit. I understand what the contract is. If we could run through a scenario involving Riverside, we have that budgeted this year. When it comes time to actually do the repair and this contract is in place, does that item come back to the commission for approval?
No, because it's been approved in the budget and we have the fencing contract in place, it would just move forward.
It does not come back to the commission?
It would not, no.
Okay, but as long as the item is at or less than what the amount is budgeted, it would not come back to us?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that?
I just think there's too much discomfort with this item to, you know, either we regroup and bring back further information or we look for another option. There's just too much discomfort to even go. And there's a three to it, there's too much discomfort.
I'm just trying.
I'm not comfortable with it with all the discomfort on the board. So I think we need to go back to the drawing board with it and either bring it back or revise it or decide on another strategy.
Do you want to have a motion to table this item?
To date.
Yeah, Ms. Lewis, thank you very much for this. And I think that the city manager probably has to have a conversation with some of the commissioners this evening. I'll talk to them as well, but I know how much work you put into these sort of things. So I very much appreciate.
Yeah, I've heard some of this, you know, I'd already, it wouldn't have been on the, I'd have pulled it from the agenda tonight with all this.
I understand, I understand. So, yeah, and I encourage the commission to talk to the city manager ahead of time for these sort of things as well. So I'd like to have a motion to table this item and then.
Motion to table.
Second. Is there a second? Vice Mayor Lunt, you seconded it?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Okay, so that was the fencing, number ten, I guess, is we're going to, these are a little more complicated. Award file number, job order contracting services utilizing Sourcewell invitation for bid. EZLQC construction contracts in the state of Florida. City manager, of course.
Yes, Janina, would you just like to come up and make the presentation on this?
Janina Lewis, Procurement Service Director. So basically, these ten, I think it's ten and eleven, are kind of similar items. They are utilizing two different contracts. This is called job order contracting and it's basically a fixed-price competitively bid IDIQ contract. And we're asking to utilize Sourcewell and Pinellas County for these particular contracts. This evening, I have a representative to kind of explain the job order contracting and what it is. And I'd like to bring up Kevin Antewix and let him kind of run through his program and then I'll come back for questioning.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate your time this evening. This is a procurement method that's been in use here in Florida and around the country for, going on thirty-two years now. And it's proven to be a pretty effective tool to be able to procure really any type of renovation, repair or straight-up construction project using, as Janina said, these fixed-price contracts that have already been competitively bid and awarded. So I have a couple slides here. I'll go through pretty quickly for you. Try and leave plenty of time for questions. But job order contracting, as I mentioned, it's been around for a number of years. And it's based on a single contract of indefinite quantity and indefinite value, IDIQ. And that contract is tied to a very large, extensive catalog of installed pricing for specified construction tasks. We refer to it as a construction task catalog or a CTC. Today, that CTC is about maybe four thousand pages of preconfigured line items. And it uses the labor, material and equipment cost that's based on localized or regionalized pricing. So just as a quick piece of background, Gordian, we are a construction consulting and management company. We are not a contractor. Contractors do not work for us. We don't work for contractors. At the end of the day, we work for public agencies such as a Sourcewell, such as Pinellas County, such as the city of Tampa, that wishes to have a job order contracting program. have a job order contracting program. So, one of our core functions as a company is the continuous collection of this construction cost data for labor and materials, which we collect from every nook and cranny of the country. And we're constantly updating these construction task catalogs. So, basically, the catalog gets created, it gets solicited, put out to bid by a particular public agency. Again, it could be a purchasing cooperative such as a Sourcewell. It could be an individual public agency such as Pinellas County. It's put out on the street. There's a competitive bid, an award that takes place. Contractors are bidding a single markup against that entire catalog. That markup must include all of their profit, all of their overhead. Everything must go into that markup. So it's a very competitive process. It introduces a much larger economy of scale into the bidding process, and it does definitely encourage more competitive bidding. The result of this process is now you have this pool, or multiple pools, of awarded contractors that have already agreed to do the work based on the pricing that was awarded to them in the catalog. And now, agencies can proceed to identify projects where they wish to receive a proposal, select a contractor, walk a job, receive a proposal, and then try and collaboratively work through that proposal to come up with a solution that's gonna meet your budget and your scope objectives, right? Once you get to that point and you have a proposal that you wish to proceed with, now, since it's already been competitively-bid and awarded, meets all the, you know, statutes and legal criteria in the state of Florida for competitive bidding, you can proceed to start that project by issuing your standard PO, your standard construction contract directly to the contractor. Kind of what is the value of all this? Pretty clearly, it's gonna save you the time and the effort of having to go out and do a separate RFP for each individual project. And as the next slide is gonna point out, at the end of the day, this is not the right solution for every project. There's gonna be times when it makes sense, times when it doesn't make sense. You'll be able to get those proposals and then decide for yourself, you know, if it makes sense to proceed or not. It also gives you access to fixed pricing. So, in today's world, as I'm sure your experience has been the last 18 months to two years, construction pricing has been very volatile. It's been very difficult to procure this type of thing, because what makes sense today, you can't procure with it three or six months from now, right? So, what this gives you is the ability to use pricing that's fixed for each one-year term of the contract. And it provides more stability to your procurement process. So, you don't have contractors coming back, you know, three, four, or five months later and telling you, well, you know, we need a change order because, you know, the cement costs more now, or the fence costs more now, right? So, it does eliminate that type of risk from the procurement process. So, as I mentioned, this is a program. It's here for you to use it when it makes sense and don't use it when it doesn't make sense. There certainly is no cost or obligation to walk jobs, receive proposals. So there's literally no risk to getting proposals through these contracts. So again, it's a tool in your toolbox to procure with. You can use it along with the way you procure today. It can work in, whoops, go back there. So it can work in cases where you have time constraints. You know, a lot of times, you have grant money, for example, that you have to use in a certain amount of time, or you're gonna lose it. You know, agencies often use job order contracting in that case because they wanna make sure that they're able to, you know, use that money in time. And they can compress the procurement time by using job order contracting. So, time-sensitive projects, you know, straightforward new construction, again, like I said, renovation, repairs, it could be above ground, it could be underground, anything that involves labor, materials, or just the labor. What you cannot do is procure only materials through this program. That is not what it was designed for. But you can procure straight labor in the case where the city has decided to direct purchase the materials. So this is just a, just a quick snapshot of the construction task catalog. I don't have to get into any type of detail here. But it utilizes CSI format. It's, this is a very transparent and granular process. It was designed for government to use. It is used by dozens of agencies all around the state, as well as all around the rest of the country. And this format is pretty widely accepted. But as you can see, all the costs are broken down in the catalog in terms of labor, materials, that go into that preconfigured, that line item, that construction task. So, so here's the five-step process to use the contracts. As I mentioned, you would identify a job, you would schedule a joint scope meeting. Well, actually, Gordian would schedule that joint scope meeting with the contractor and someone from the city, your PM or whoever's gonna be involved in that project. We'd walk that job. And from there, the contractor would be creating a detailed scope of work and a line item price proposal. Gordian, our operations team, is going to also create their own takeoff on the project. So that when the contractors complete with their scope of work and their proposal, it comes to our operations team first to review it. And it's really one of the primary functions that we serve in this process, is to audit those proposals. And we make sure that the contractor has not put items in there that don't belong in there, that there aren't redundant line items in the proposal. Those of you that have procured construction before know that contractors can get a little creative. And so, we're here to really look out for your best interest and to make sure those proposals are clean, and that they're auditable, and that they're constructible. Once that proposal is finished and the scope is finished, we get together, we review it with the city, go through any questions, go through all the line items. You, at that point, can make any changes you wish to make to the scope, to the proposal. You can choose to reject it, accept it, whatever the case may be. The good news is at the end, again, you don't have to go out to RFP for that project. You can proceed to, you know, start the project by issuing your PO and your contract to the contractor. So, I guess the next couple of slides are the contracts that are available through purchasing cooperatives that you can use. I mentioned Pinellas County. The county has had a program that Gordian first put into place, I think it was 2007, that today includes contracts and contractors that were awarded for their real estate department and their utilities department, that you can use, again, to walk jobs and receive proposals. These are predominantly local contractors in the general Pinellas Hillsborough area. And then the other contracts that are available on a cooperative basis are through Sourcewell, which you may have heard of before. But Sourcewell is a national purchasing cooperative. I don't know, am I hitting the wrong, oh, this is the wrong way. I apologize. Okay, so, Sourcewell, when they bid their contracts out, they divided the state up into 10 regions. That way, each region of the state has its own catalog and its own, you know, set of pricing. And you can see here, you have general contractors, civil contractors, HVAC mechanical contractors, paving, asphalt, roofing. So you have really all types of different contractors there that you can use to walk jobs and receive proposals. So, that's the information that I brought to present to you. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, again, this program that we're bringing forward is just a tool to be able to accomplish more projects. We do not intend to take away the bidding process or the RFP process. And we do tend to thoroughly evaluate what we put towards this particular program. And the reason we say that is because a lot of projects come in that, you know, there's many opportunities in the local businesses and construction areas that we feel that could benefit the locals. And there are also some projects that are pretty simple, like an air conditioning that could be done through this program. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Okay. City Manager La Cora, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments? Remote access comments?
Any one. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands this time, sir.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do, actually. It's Kevin, is that correct? I tried your last name, but I didn't wanna butcher it. You mentioned that the CTCs were updated once a year per contract?
Correct.
Okay, so, so that's on the anniversary day of that specific contract with Sourcewell or Pinellas County or anything. So, prices remain, at least as a price in the catalogs, remain static for that one year?
And the contractors' awarded factor as well.
Okay, so, do the contractors file with you specific, specific factors every year as well?
The factors are bid the first time. And then, at the end of each contract year, the factors are adjusted based on the construction cost index. So if the CCI has moved 2.5% or 3%, whatever the index has moved, then that's what the factors are subject to being adjusted.
So if my original factor on a, I don't know, a non-secure normal work hour thing was 1.2, and the CCI went up three points that year, that the next year would automatically be adjusted to 1.3, say?
Yeah, or 1.2, 3%, yeah.
So the contractor itself does not have any flexibility to adjust that cost factor during the course of that year?
So there is a mechanism that exists. In the case where there's very, very large increases, so like, as an example, last year, we saw lumber go up 200, 300%. We have a mechanism that we call a non-pre-priced factor that is designed to be able to include things that aren't in the catalog. Because as...
Yeah, I understand the non, I've read this pretty extensively.
Right, right. So what we did last year in that situation was, the contractors would come to us and say, well, hey, you know, here's the price for this lumber is, you know, paying $15 a square foot, and my price in the market is $40 a square foot right now. I can't, you know, what do you want me to do? I can't, I can't, you know, I can't work with that pricing. So we allowed them, in those extreme cases, to escalate that price delta through the non-pre-priced factor.
Ah, okay.
If they came to us and said, hey, Gordian, it's gone up 15%, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna let them use the non-pre-priced factor for that. But if it's something severe, I mean, we, those were unusual times, you know, that we were dealing with. We really haven't seen anything like that since like 2008, you know, those types of fluctuations. So, we're very strict with that type of thing, and we will push back, you know, if they ask.
And with a specific contract, the factor, as you mentioned it, is bid by individual contractors for, so for example, the Pinellas contract, I don't know, I can't remember who all was on it, but Calogese, et cetera, bid a specific factor, and that factor holds for separate categories that are under that factor. Okay, so, let's talk about the factor itself. The factor that the contractor adds to the fixed-price index, well, actually, let's start with the fixed price. Where do you get your pricing from?
We get it from all types of sources. We have a group of data scientists that literally, that's all they do is collect this pricing all day, every day. They're calling...
From what sources?
You know, lumber, you know, lumber, lumber yards, lumber manufacturers. I mean, we call Home Depot, Lowe's. I mean, we're calling every single place that you could possibly buy construction material. So, you know, manufacturers, you know...
So what you're attempting by doing this is to get a good rough average of what prices are from, and you mentioned that it was done on localized, regional basis as well?
Yeah, depending on the contracts.
So my pricing for lumber, lumber-associated, non-secure, normal work hour stuff would be different, say, well, if you look at the Sourcewell from the Miami-Dade area to the Panhandle area?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. That's interesting. And that's a proprietary catalog, is it not?
It's public. It's a proprietary system, but the catalog is a public document.
Public to whom? I couldn't find it.
Anybody that wants to see it. You just have to request it. We write it.
All right.
It's a very large document, so...
Well, the way it's listed is copyrighted, the name, so I figured it wasn't...
It's just the name, yeah. Not the actual...
All right. Okay, so moving on from this not proprietary, I thought it was proprietary, but it's not proprietary and it's open to the public, you guys hide it pretty well. Because I do my research, and I couldn't find it. Within the contractor's factor, the contractor's factor is what he expects to earn for profit, overages, whatever else, plus a factor that he pays to Gordian, right?
In the case of Sourcewell, yes, correct. In the case of Pinellas County, in those contracts, the way that it's written, Gordian's factor would appear as a line item on the proposal that is a non-reimbursable line item. So, it would still be something that is paid to the contractor and the contractor pays Gordian.
With Sourcewell, if you're looking at a dollar, and Pinellas, you're looking at a dollar, if we just look at non-sec, normal work hours factors, they're pretty comparable. With Pinellas, there's an extra line item for the contractor Gordian fee. And for the Sourcewell contract and for the Pinellas contract, there would still be a fee to the city for Gordian license use?
It's in the factor.
The fee to the city is in the factor?
So the city itself...
Licensing fee to the city.
Right. So Gordian's fee is, in the case of Sourcewell, is built into the factor. So you would not pay us directly. You would not have to contact with us directly. The fee in the case of Pinellas County is a separate line item in the proposal that you would still pay to the contractor. So you would still not have to contract with Gordian nor pay us directly. That makes sense?
Right, so, I'm a little confused, because it wasn't all that evident when I was reading through the contracts. Or maybe it was explanation from Janina. There is no license fee, period, using either contract for the city to pay directly to Gordian. There is no license add-on fee?
Correct. That's correct.
So, whatever pricing we get from the Sourcewell contract, that fee is already embodied within that?
Yep.
And is encompassed in the markup for the contractor, correct?
Correct.
And, not the same with Pinellas, it's lifted out so you can see it?
Correct.
But, and so it's in addition to the markup for the, for that particular...
Contractor, yes.
Contractor.
Correct.
Okay, so, well, that changes some of my comments at this point. So that fee typically, at least in the Pinellas contract, is an additional 6.5% over the...
Six and a quarter.
Pardon me?
Believe it's 6.25%.
604?
6.25. 6.25, 6.125.
I'm hard of hearing, so. So 6.25% over the, over the factor that the contractor gives you. In the Sourcewell contract, there wouldn't be an additional, it would be just whatever the factor is.
Yeah, and I can tell you, it's, on Sourcewell, it's 6%. But again, it's built into the factor itself.
Yeah, so it's still in there in Sourcewell's factor stuff. Is the, is the pricing between Pinellas, as far as the CTC, different than the one Sourcewell uses?
It's, it's a little bit different, but it's very similar. It's a little bit different, but it's very similar. Because the CTC that was developed for Pinellas is based on Pinellas County costs, whereas the CTC that was developed for Sourcewell encompasses not only Pinellas County, but Hillsborough County, Pasco County, it's a little bit larger area, but it's very, you know, it's pretty similar.
Okay, so they're pretty similar. I did some averaging, and I thought they were like, maybe one or two percent apart a little bit. Okay, that's about all the comments I have for you, then. Thank you very much for being patient with me. I have some comments for Janine, though, or Janina, though. So I've kind of lost my places. To which ones we're discussing is this? You're looking to award 2 million or 2 and a half million?
There are two contracts. So the first one is 2 million for utilizing the Sourcewell with the state of Florida contractors, and that is basically a lot of the, I was probably gonna get the terminology wrong, but like your hard structures above ground. The Pinellas County contract is more of the utilities types, which is more expensive, because that's your water lines, sewage, forest main, lift stations, those type of items. We've bid out in the past, and they tend to run a little bit higher for project-wise. So one is 2 million and one is 2.5.
So with both contracts, with an approximate 6.5 percent uplift, not considering the difference between various contractors and their factors, which say, "I need more money" or whatever, "my costs are higher," et cetera, et cetera. We're talking close to $300,000, just for convenience of using this contract.
I think you're looking at, the convenience of using this contract is, one, that those prices are set, two, we're looking at different, like administrative purposes. You know, an administrative contract, just on our part, alone is $500, you know, with every piece of paper and every person that touches that contract. So we're looking at more of an option that we can get to the project faster, and it's a qualified vendor who's already been pre-approved.
I understand that, but we need to realize that you're paying $300,000 for easier access.
Well, oh, go ahead, Paul.
Hi, Paul Smith, Public Service Director. I'm here 'cause I have a stake in this item as well.
I'm sure you do, Paul.
But for the betterment of building our infrastructure. I wanted to add, there's some avoided costs with this whole thing, and that is when you're preparing bidding documents, all that work we're usually paying engineers to do, you could easily get up into that $200,000 range easily or more for just a couple of big projects if you have to go through that whole bidding process, preparing that. So this offers a more streamlined approach, so you can avoid, I won't say all of those costs, but a majority of them.
All right.
I agree.
I'm out of comments. Thank you very much for being patient with me.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot of comments about this. I think it's another tool in the toolkit for the procurement department. Yes, there's markup to it, but then you also have some professionals who are pressing these individuals for pricing and marketing. The current environment, one of the issues that, I don't know if it was discussed or not, is actually just getting bids in general. Is it a difficult thing right now in the current environment with the building and where we're at? And it could be small projects or large projects, and we may only get one or two bids in the current environment. So with this opportunity, there's multiple vendors here to bid on a project based on a fixed pricing. So we could select one contractor over another contractor. If we don't like the contractor in the past work, we could go with another contractor. Again, if the city wanted to bid out and go just an RFP, like the clerk's office, for example, or something large, that could happen too. But I think it's just another tool, another opportunity for the procurement department and the city staff to get stuff done quicker. And that's one of the things I think that the board has been looking for in the past, and currently is looking to continue to see projects move forward in a timely fashion. So with that, I'm happy to support these tonight.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by saying I love the idea. So, but I do have some questions to ask regarding it, because I did agree with what you said, Paul, about the speed and the costs of this. So would this be similar to an Exactimate program type thing, if you're familiar with that at all? If you're not, I-
Yeah, I'm not completely familiar with Exactimate.
Insurance companies use a process very similar to this. It's all predetermined, labor costs, sheetrock costs, all these costs and line item. So you just literally go room by room, and you do your workup. It's a line-by-line item, only this is for contracting. So if that's, so now that you understand, so that's the way this seems to be, unless it's an unorthodox type of unique project. I'm sure when you have 4,000 or more items in there, it incorporates most of the things that you need. You're not gonna build a school out of this type thing. That would be a little difficult to do. That's a very detailed-oriented thing. But this is more for, just to get some of our smaller projects swept through quicker with less headaches, less paperwork, less time, so to save money all around. If that's the way I could summarize this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my next question, I was gonna ask about whether you're segmented by state or by zone, but I was glad you put that picture up, because it explained it, because the labor costs are completely different from area. Supply costs are different from shipping in areas, so I'm glad you did that. Do you have contracted dues to your organization? So how do you make your money?
No, we don't have any dues. Again, we have a fee that is built in, either built into the factor that the contractor's bidding, or it's broken out as a separate line item in the proposal. But it's paid to us, you know, it's distributed to us by the contractor once they get paid. So it allows you to use this whole program and process without having to hire Gordian or pay us directly.
A commercial Angie?
I'm sorry?
A commercial style of Angie?
You know, I'm vaguely familiar with Angie, but yeah, I think it's probably something similar to that.
Okay. What happens if the contractor takes a job on, and there is extenuating circumstances once they've agreed to it, such as finding mold? Is there a supplemental that comes into play?
Yes. So we do have a process for change orders, is actually called a supplemental. You have to be able to do that in construction, right? So if there was a need to, you know, have something else done on the project, there'd be a separate scope of work that would be created for your approval, and then based on that scope of work, you'd receive that supplemental, you know, that would be associated with that scope.
How do you handle things that are outside the 4,000 items that you have on there?
Right. So we do have a, it's called a non-prepriced line item, and so what that does is that allows the contractor to go out and get as many as three quotes for something, depending on how unique it is, and then insert that into the proposal using that non-prepriced line item, using the lowest, you know, of the three quotes. Sometimes it could be something that's very unique, like, let's say, the city says, "Oh, well, we only use train, you know, HVAC units." The contractor could go to the train factory, get a quote from train, and then put that into the proposal. We do limit those non-prepriced line items rather strenuously, because it does dilute the whole, you know, fact that everything's been bid out, but there is a mechanism to add things that are not in the catalog.
So you've answered all my questions. Janina, I have a question for you. Would you, when would you decide whether to use this source for the project or to go to a regular bid outside of this program?
I'm gonna refer to my project administration department, but basically, I think we're looking at scope, how large the scope is and the specifications of the job.
Okay, so you have no issue?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
So you have no issues not utilizing this? This is more so, I'm seeing this as being a smaller project type. You know, we have so many of these small projects that we really shouldn't be wasting as much time in, and just getting them quicker done and quicker, you know, less paperwork, and-
So for instance, the Sunset Beach bathroom renovation. Originally, it was estimated to cost up to $30,000. Luckily, we bid it out and it came in under 25. But for a project like that, that's a small building relatively, it's just tile, you know, pipe, plumbing, and paint. So projects similar to that, I wouldn't consider some of the utilities, and I'll have to refer to Paul for that, for size, what you consider small.
Yes.
Because you may see something come out, and you'd be like, "Wait, why did we use that contract?" But it may make more sense to use this contract, because you know the contractor and his performance ratings.
Let me ask one, this could be a little bit of a funny question, but I have to ask it anyway. Do they, do gates and fences?
I looked at the list when I popped it up, so I'm not sure, but I could double-check and see if fence- I know fencing is in their construction task catalog, but I don't know if any of these particular contractors provide that.
How to ask it, I'm sorry. Okay. I have no further questions. I love the idea. I understand exactly how this would speed things up, and as long as we have an oversee, you know, oversight on it, and I'm all for it.
I will tell you that the plan is to revamp our procurement administrative code to include utilizing this type of contract and the procedures that will go along with it, and that will be signed off by the city manager.
You know, it was interesting, I wrote one more thing that I'll just share with you, it's not a question. I said, I wrote down, "Why haven't we done this before?"
We did. Back in 2007, this used to be within the city, back in the histories I could find. I do not know why they let it drop off, that's-
Well, that would have been my next question, why did it drop off?
Don't know, maybe change of people or something occurred in those years that maybe they didn't have the budget. Like, 2008 was an odd anomaly year as well, so it probably fell off.
Because contractors love this too.
Yes.
You know, it is not just good on the person who's contracted, you know, I should say not on the contractor themselves, because they know what the pricing is, they know what they're gonna make, unless you have price gouging or, you know, massive inflation. You know, everybody, there's less fighting on this, so I'm all for it every which way to Sunday. Thank you.
Commissioner Culias.
Just looking to add another process to procurement and representative Gordon, so you will be somewhat the mediator overlooking to see that our city, Tarpon Springs, is getting the best deal and being taken care of? And are you supposed to look out for the city's best interests as well as the contractor, or more importantly, the city?
We're really only looking out for the city. I mean, the contractor is an important, you know, business partner, but at the end of the day, we're under contract with Pinellas County, we're under contract with Sourcewell. So you, as a member of Sourcewell or as a, you know, user of the Pinellas County program, are really, you are our customer, really working for you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We've seen some recent projects that just haven't gone well under certain avenues with the, you know, bidding out, so let's give it a shot and give our staff another process. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
He gave me an idea, that's all. What happens when a project goes south, when it doesn't work? What do you do then?
I'm gonna say for our part, depending on the size and the dollar amount of the project, it is up to us whether or not we want to require a bond from the company. And then for the other part, I'll turn that over to Gordian.
So what I'll say about that is, you know, we are not providing a formal construction management service off the shelf, although we can do that on a case-by-case basis if the city desires it on a particular project. But we stay involved after that PO is issued. We are a phone call away. If there ever is any concern, anything that's bothering you about the project, contractor, you know, is not performing anything, we're always here where we can come and intervene on your behalf and try and resolve things. You know, the contractor is gonna be under contract with the city. So if something went so awry that you needed to really take action, it's gonna be an action taken, you know, by the city. But we've found, you know, situations many time and time again where we are able to come in and get things resolved, because the thing about us is that we're managing this program statewide and in, you know, nationwide, and contractors do not want to get into a situation where we're not bringing them any more projects. So we do have a certain amount of leverage over the contractors as a result of that, and we can become your advocate and try and get those situations resolved.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, a couple of things. One, our contract with whoever would be in Sourcewell would be our contract, is that correct? We would be using our contract or somebody else's contract?
We would be using someone else's contract. This would be, we use the term piggyback, we would be piggybacking off the Sourcewell contract. We'd be one of the members using it from the co-op.
Well, as far as the performance, for example, like what we had on Cross Avenue, I think is what Commissioner Eisner was getting at. What would happen then? Would there be a, I guess, is there a requirement that all these contractors are bonded as well?
On the particular Gordian, I'm gonna let Kevin answer that, but for us, it's project-dependent and dollar value-dependent on whether or not we'll require a bond.
But-
I don't think particularly for the bids, I don't think you guys require a bond on the-
No, only what you require. So if you have a project where you want the contractor to, you know, to be, to obtain a bond, then you would just, you know, make that part of your requirement upfront, and they would-
We ask for that, is that correct? We would ask for that?
We would ask for it when we put our package together for the contractor, yes.
The other question I have is, and you and I talked about it with Mr. Smith, and I'm comfortable with everything that's been provided. The only, if you recall, we had a conversation, we have our purchasing guidelines on our normal method for obtaining services, projects, and brick-and-mortar sort of things. But this is kind of a new animal for us, that we don't have any kind of a policy in place or any kind of guidelines. And I remember the one thing that was, this program allows you to keep asking for the same contractor over, if you like the contractor's work, you can ask for that same contractor again. And I think that there needs to be some safeguards in terms of the procurement of that. And I would like to see some kind of, I'm gonna support this tonight, but I think we need to work up some kind of a policy. We don't have a policy for this type of animal, whereas we have a policy for RFPs and everything else that goes along with that. That's the only thing. And there may be some other jurisdictions that have policies in place that cover this, and we could pick up off them. We don't need to recreate the wheel, but at some point, within a reasonable amount of time, maybe right after the first of the year or so, when we get into some of these new initiatives, if we could have something come forward, and I'll let the city manager work out with whoever the city attorneys at that time, and whether it's an ordinance or a resolution, or whether we incorporate it into our procurement. Yeah, okay. That's it. That's all I have. Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to approve, and second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
No.
Mayor Vaticiades?
Yes. All right. The next one is, let me get down to here. It's number 11, I believe, is that correct? Yeah. Award file number 230053-C-Jail. Job order contracting services utilizing Pinellas County contract bid number 21041CPPLU. Wastewater Treatment Plant, and Water Plant Maintenance, Minor Construction Underground Utility- Maintenance, Minor Construction Underground Utilities. This is something similar, so I'll let you pick it up from there. Um, is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, we covered some of it in the first one, but just go specifically to this one, a brief update.
Uh, so specifically, this particular item is covering, um, utilizing the Pinellas County wastewater and water treatment job program, and what that encompasses is, uh, a lot of the, um, underground utilities, water mains, forest mains, lift stations, um, basically, Pinellas County went out with Gordian and they bid out their own job contract, and this is the result of that. Uh, the prices are similar to what we saw before, it's a set catalog with a, an additional markup rate because they run it a little bit differently than Sourcewell. With that, I'm gonna turn over to Paul, maybe to mention some of the projects that we were interested in using on this.
Similar system that we just talked about before, so I don't get that detail again, but this is a different job order contract, um, program with Pinellas County, and it's specific to water and wastewater utilities, so, um, we've got several CIP projects that we think would fit very well. Uh, one example is a lift station reconstruction we need to do, and based on the bidding environment right now, we're really not excited about putting something like that out to bid. We just feel like our experience tells us either we're gonna get a very inflated price or perhaps, uh, a low bid contractor that might not be able to handle the job, so, uh, I think right now, this, this type of option, as many of you have mentioned, it's, it's another tool in the toolbox. One other point I wanna make, um, is that each project that you put out to get a proposal on, you know, we have the ability to review the pricing before we go forward with it, and we've got a good feel for what things should cost, we have engineers' estimates on our utilities projects, so anything that's way out of whack with that would bring us back to the table to figure out what else we could do.
All right, thank you. Ms., um, Ms. Lewis, do you have anything else to add to that, or?
Uh, I did just wanna add on that particular contract, a lot of those contractors are around Pinellas County, so they're very familiar with our circumstances and our geographical, you know, subsurfaces.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Is there anybody out there in the public?
There's people out there.
We're, we're working on the...
Mr. Jump, uh, you may be tied up with the lights, but are there any remote access comments? He's back here. Okay. Um, let's continue on and, uh, we'll pick up on that. Um, let's go to Commissioner comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
Um, I have no further comments, this is...
Okay. Commissioner Carr? Oh, there he is.
I've got no further questions or comments. Thanks for bringing this forward. I think this is a good thing for the city of Tarpon Springs.
Commissioner Eisner.
Does Sourcewell do lights?
Also blink.
That was a joke, I'm sorry. I can't help myself sometimes. Um, I have no comment. This, this again is, is very similar to the other one, um, as long as we have the option to use Sourcewell or go outside the, uh, for a bid. I trust your judgment on that, Paul, so I think it's another just great idea to save money.
Okay. Commissioner Cuyas?
Happy to support this and knowing that Gordian will be looking out for our best interest with these projects as well. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Jump, I know you're back up there now, um, I saw you. Are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments. I have a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Okay. Number twelve, authorize exec- execution of assignment of funds from the opioid litigation to Pinellas County. City Manager Lacorius.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start on that. Um, this is something that was talked about probably in the eighteen, nineteen, twenty area. Um, we finally, as a city, uh, passed a resolution the twenty, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, to put in, uh, for this money, to, to be on the suit of the opioids and the opioid problems they've caused people. Um, we opted in, uh, at that time, back during that time and before, we opted in, um, mostly our public safety, our police and fire talked about, talked about it and the money, and the requirements that was gonna be put into place was not something really for individual city, would be better done at a countywide basis, so most of the cities I know, um, pretty much had planned, obviously, to not turn down the money, accept the money, but to combine with the county, combine the money with the county and put on programs that'd be the advantages to, to citizens throughout Pinellas County. Um, again, we've got, um, the police chief and the fire chief here to kinda talk about what that is, um, what we're asking for tonight. This is the agreement. Um, again, most of the cities I know, the Clear Waters, I know Safety Harbor passed the, passed theirs to go to the county, uh, most of the cities I know are, are put into the county, and there's some pretty good programs being put together that'll be of great advantage to our residents, and, uh, the pool of money will do a lot more in our residence than the small amount of money that we'd have to come up with the program, the administering of the grants, uh, the dealing with it. Um, again, I've got the two public safety, um, individuals who can talk a little bit further on that, and what we're asking tonight is to approve this agreement and approve the mayor to sign it with the county, uh, to, to, to send this money as it comes in. Uh, Ron Herring's also here, the money's gonna be coming in, um, as they make more settlements, I think they just settled with Walmart or something, they just, and that's gonna be another trickle of money coming in. Um, so Ron Herring is here to talk about that aspect, if you need him, um, to talk about this, but, uh, uh, again, this is to, to, to sign the document, have the mayor sign the document and, uh, forward these funds to the county for countywide programs to help the residents of the city and the other Pinellas County cities.
Thank you. Um, gentlemen, do you have anything to add?
Uh, Scott Young, Fire Chief. So what this doing by giving the, uh, the county the money, we think it's the best option because we, we think it'd be better served. There's a couple of programs that, uh, EMS is doing now that this money will go to. One of the new programs, starting in January, is our paramedics will be doing a, a leave it at home program where they, if we run a, a call, then we have to give the Narcan medicine to the people, they'll leave it at the house, uh, as another dose at the house for the family, so that will, this money will pay for that. Um, there's also the treatment program out there that the county's doing, so our paramedics, when they're on the call, will sit there and automatically, if the person wants treatment, they will give that mon- in the computer, assign them a, a treatment program, so when they get out of the hospital, they'll go right to a treatment program, so that money will go there for this. Um, i- it's just a way to help. We just think it's a better use of the money to combine it with the county's, uh, resources.
I'd probably just also add that, you know, currently, the police department and fire department, we do get Narcan, uh, provided through the county, uh, at no charge to us or the city, uh, so this could just kinda help to supplement that. Was asked about other avenues throughout the ca- uh, county that, or city that would be available to people. Uh, the health department in the city has free Narcan for, for people that may need it as well, and that's funded through the county as well, so this would all supplement that.
Okay, so Narcan is available through the county upon request, or you have to qualify for it?
For the police and fire, we just, we get replenished all the time, uh, 'cause it does have a short shelf life, uh, so we'll re- go through, uh, Craig Meiser...
As far as the health services, uh, for residents?
But for local citizens, they can go, go through the, uh, health department, correct?
Okay.
Or you could purchase it at Walmart or CVS or anywhere else.
Okay.
But it's costly, I believe.
It, it's a little pricey.
It's always better to go get it from the health department.
Go to the health department, the health. Yeah, and then I, I do think, like, uh, Chief Young was talking about the leave it in place thing's gonna be a, a, a very good thing to, uh, through the county and through the EMS.
All righty, let's go to public comments. Um, there are any public comments here, so let me ask, uh, Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Um, let's go to Commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I'm in support of transferring the money to the county, it's, so I've seen our officers use Narcan, and the fact that they get this from the county free on a refreshment basis, the same with the fire department and stuff like that, just for that one reason alone, I'm, I'm for supporting the county, never mind all the other programs that they're trying to run around, so I'm good with that.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Carr?
I've, I've got no comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner?
I have no comments, I'm all for it.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Well, I got a few comments. Um, first, I'd, I'd really like to know what programs that the county's gonna be using to, uh, provide this, since that we're gonna be giving back, giving back this money along with other, uh, cities, uh, just wanna make sure it's, um, uh, I did call the health department, and they do give out free Narcan, naloxone, um, the Tarpon Springs Health Department too, so there's a no ask, you don't have to say why you need it, you don't have to say who it's for, anything, and you can just walk in there and say, hey, I'd like to have, uh, some Narcan, and as long as you're over eighteen, they will be able to distribute it to you, um, and, but that's, that's funds that's already, that's already funded, and I spoke to the health department regarding that. Uh, I just wanna make sure that whatever money we're giving to them, besides the Narcan that our first responders get, that it's actually being used to help those in need in Tarpon Springs, so I, I don't know how we're gonna be able to go back and look at it, but I, I would like city staff and maybe the, you know, the fire department and police department to make some notices on maybe like their, their social media pages, uh, uh, we gotta get rid of the stigma of people understanding that, you know, there are people they, they know or friends or family who, uh, this may be good to have around for them, and so, uh, just try to spread the word out. This is a new program with our health department and giving out the Narcan, and, um, so I'm all for it, but I just don't wanna give the money down to the county and not have that reciprocate back to us for those in need, so, uh, I'll support it, but I, I think we just need to get the word out there on, uh, there's free, it's free out there, you know, there's no stigma to it, and, uh, that way we can just get the, the word spread. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna ask, is there any information that we can get from the county that might tell us how that money is distributed? Is that what you're...
Uh, I, I did reach out to the health department and they, they did send me an email with a whole bunch of links regarding, uh, the naloxan information, and, and so I'll, I'll send it over to the city manager, that way he could funnel it through everybody to get a chance to look at it, so.
Okay. Is that, um, is that okay with you then?
Yeah, yeah, some here support, but a little, like, like I said, I've seen some other organizations in which, you know, uh, they're really worried about mid-county and south, and I just don't want that to be the case with us, you know?
Um, I'm, I'm fine as the, as the program as is set up right now, and, and I appreciate the information concerning the Narcan from the health department, that's something I didn't know about. I would imagine that there's many, many people in the, uh, community would like to know that information. I'm not sure how we, we disseminate that, but...
We will, we, we've got methods to do that.
All right.
And the programs, they talk about the new programs, the treatment program, soon as all that comes out, we'll distribute that too.
Okay. Um, with that, I'd like to have a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. All right, the last item, um, that we have is appointment to the Board of Adjustment and, um, the city manager, or is that the city clerk?
City clerk.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Jacobs?
Uh, yes. Currently, uh, we're trying to fill, uh, the vacancy that, um, was vacated, uh, due to Commissioner Eisner becoming a commissioner. Um, we haven't been able to fill that position.
Big shoes, big shoes.
Um, we haven't been able to fill that position due to a lack of applications. Um, we did receive an application, and we didn't bring it forth at the time, hoping to fill the others through Citizens Academy and some of the other things. Um, so tonight, we have to fill, uh, the vacated position by Commissioner Eisner, and we could either, uh, A, appoint the current alternate that we have, which is Joanne Simon, to move, uh, up as a regular member, um, or we can select the person that submitted the application. Uh, if we do option A, then we would also have to fill, uh, Mrs. Simon's position. Um, we also, just for the future, we do have, um, we still have a vacancy of alternate one, and we also have a term that has expired. Um, as you might be aware, this board does not, has term limits, but there's not, um, I mean, has terms but no term limits. Um, so we are waiting, I did speak to the gentleman, um, whose term had expired, he's able to serve an additional two years, um, and in the future, um, you know, they still have the ten-year rule right now, um, so he would be able to serve an additional two years. I personally spoke to, uh, Mr. Hrbroski, and we're waiting on a response back whether he would like to continue to serve, so once we have that, we'll bring that back, but as for tonight, we're just looking at filling the expired, the term of Commissioner Eisner.
Okay, well, you still have a chance to go back to that Board of Adjustment.
I thought I was the funny guy up here.
All right, let's go to, uh, public comments, uh...
I'll make a motion to that.
The, um, there are, there is anyone in front of us. Uh, Mr. Jump, are there any, um, except for one lady? Um, Mr. Jump, are there any public comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor Lunt, I'm gonna go ahead and start with you to make the motion and get this thing moving.
I recommend we appoint a, uh, Joanne Simon to, uh, for the expired term of Mr. Eisner, although I would've called it not expired, you were voted out.
Well, he resigned, but it expired during the meantime.
And, and appoint, uh, Timothy Grossman as alternate one, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Well, I'm sorry, that would be alternate two. She, we have that he resigned, but we don't have a...
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry, alternate two.
We only have one.
So, kinda give, give us a snapshot of what, what you just made, your recommendation.
I'm sorry, the recommendation was to, uh, appoint A, which was, uh, Joanne Simon, to fill the expired term of, uh, Mike Eisner, and, uh, the, to fill that alternate vacancy with, uh, Timothy Grossman.
Okay.
I support that, and I'll make a motion to do that as well.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, I, I assume you agree with that then, Ms. Commissioner Cuyas? Uh, Commissioner Eisner, do you, okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Unless I'm mistaken, that ends the agenda for this evening, is that correct?
Yep.
That's it.
Let's go to board and staff comments. Um, Chief Young?
Uh, no comments, sir.
Okay. Well, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Galastegui, do you have any?
No comments.
Okay, city manager Lacorius?
Uh, no, except this was, remember, this was a back-to-back meeting that we, because of the holidays, we got the same in December. December, we do, because of the hurricane messing up the advertising, and because of all the charter items, the election, everything, we've got, we've got two pretty hefty agendas in, in the two meetings, the first two weeks of, of December. I'm waiting to see where those items fall, I sent you a memorandum that I may look at moving the meeting up to six o'clock, but I need to make sure there's enough items before the, all the many items we're gonna have on ordinance and resolutions, 'cause I don't wanna have a situation like I made the bad call before and we had forty-five minutes in between, so we'll be working on that agenda for the first meeting in December, starting tomorrow, um, and if we've got a lot of items there that I'm pretty sure will last us to seven-thirty, I may wanna move it up... And if we've got a lot of items there that I'm pretty sure will last us to 7:30, I may want to move it up. But again, I'll make that call and let you know. Also, a reminder, I told, I sent you some dates to hold open because we'll have three attorneys, RFPs, that will at least need one and maybe two nights in those first two weeks of December. There's only a few nights because all the meetings have been moved up to accommodate for Christmas. So just be cognizant of those dates, and as soon as we know, depending on what the bids come in, I'll give you a more definitive on those dates, which ones there will actually be. So just please hold those dates open. We've got a lot to do the first two weeks of December to accomplish, so that's it.
See, Clerk Jacobs.
I just want to remind the residents, if we and the board, if we have, if y'all know of anyone who's interested in any of the boards, we're in need of applicants. We do have some other vacancies coming up that, as you see, Board of Adjustments, they're going to be tight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lund.
I'm assuming when when we looked at this, when I got a page that said BOA absences or were none, because the page was blank. But just just as a side note, I think we all need to work on getting more active people into our boards. Even though some of them could use some fresh blood, but I mean, we're really at that point where it seems we need to to sort of generate in that way. I don't really have anything more to say except thank you, Mariana, for for being here. Appreciate your time. And I did learn some things at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council that I'm going to share through staff, both on a resiliency and a seawall basis and stuff like that. So that'll be coming up later, but anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Mayor, I want to wish the community, residents and businesses a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you could spend it safely with friends and family. It's been an honor. I'm thankful to be able to serve the city residents this year.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a public comment that I got sent that I would like to read, if it's okay with you.
Of course, it's your time.
This is from George Dukas, and it's, please read in public comments at the next BOC meeting. I'd like to thank the current board for making this in Zoom participation possible. I've been a part-time resident of Tarpon Springs for several years and will be in the next months, be in transitioning to full-time very soon with my retirement. I'm leaving a city that has had to share, has had its share of scandals, favoritisms and selective enforcement that benefited a few. I follow the BOC meetings and watch them on YouTube. The past months have been interesting and intriguing to me. I believe that if it smells fishy, break out the frying pan. I believe that this board is mandated to investigate and potential conflicts of interest, unethical practices, bar violations and possible criminal activities that have occurred in recent years with all involved. No one is exempt or untouchable or exempt from scrutiny. I see several brave commissioners and a mayor that are not afraid to confront those who wish to derail their efforts to make Tarpon Springs better. I hope that anyone who has violated their oath or misrepresented the citizens of Tarpon Springs be brought to light. Thank you for your input. I also wanted to thank the residents of Tarpon Springs for their support. Had a good function this past weekend. I celebrated my birthday at that function. It was nice, good food, a lot of good feedback. I want to wish all the residents a happy Thanksgiving with friends and family and good fortune in the future. And I look forward to serving in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Ms. Galastegui, thank you for this evening. You'll be with us next, the first meeting in December as well. Is that right? Okay, thank you. We're looking forward to seeing you again at that time. Also, for the next two meetings, please take heart what the city manager is saying, and let's try and get our questions answered ahead of time and also discussions with staff. There are going to be some pretty lengthy, detailed issues. I'm sure the residents may have some things to say about those as well. So I would appreciate everybody's cooperation in doing that. From here until after the first of the year, generally after epiphany, it's going to be a very, very busy event schedule. And I very much appreciate the the city commission's participation in all those, and y'all do an excellent job in representing the city, and I very much appreciate that. Also, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, certainly a safe Thanksgiving. And I really wish that to be the case for our first responders, our police department, our fire department. And and I know you have families as well, and and you stay safe and try and keep our residents as safe as we can. I know y'all do a good job in that regard. Also, I really, really want to call out and give a special thanks to our city clerks, Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Menusus. They've been putting up with some extraordinary circumstances over the last couple of weeks that is tremendous pressure, no matter how calm they are. If I was in their shoes, I know how I'd feel. So I wouldn't wish this on anyone. They've got the public records. We've got an additional two today that I'm sure the clerks haven't gotten to yet. We've got the election coming up, the qualifying coming up. We've got the referendum questions coming up. There's some internal clerk collector issues that need to be resolved as far as changing billing systems or collection systems that need to be dealt with. So just provide them all the support that you can, and and again, I know we sometimes look at ourselves, and we've got all this detailed work we need to do, which is fine. That's, you know, we we we're here to serve the public. But it's also an exceptionally challenging time for our clerks to keep up with it. And certainly, I'm there to provide whatever help they they need in that, and so far, they haven't needed any help. And I know some of you have asked them for that, but they they're very independent and very proud of what they do. So Ms. Jacobs, thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you do, and and please extend our gratitude to Ms. Menusus as well. With that, unless the commission has anything else to say, meeting adjourned at 10:05.
Make sure, I think we got some documents to sign. Is there still some things down this way to sign?